In order, please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, the school board will convene to close session tonight under Wisconsin statute 1925, brand one, brand A, brand B, and brand C for a private conference related to the consideration of the issuance of a final layoff notice deliberated in closed session regarding the issuance of final layoff notice. Concerning a ca- uh, oh, it's small, which part of this we read?
Just keep deliberating, deliberating concerning.
Yeah, deliberation concerning a case which was the subject of any judicial quasi-trial or hearing before that governmental body. There is a lot of other language there, the state statute, if you want to read it, we'll get you a copy of the agenda, but we don't need to read that off. So, the first order of business tonight is to reorganize the boards, the election of officers. So, Mr. Rooki will call for nominations of the president.
Okay, I have a nomination for president.
I nominate Sevierian.
Then the second one?
I'll second that.
Second. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
I move that the nominations be closed and the unanimous ballot be cast for Sevierian.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, then we will take nominations for vice president.
I'll nominate Keith Bogman.
Second.
Any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations?
I move that the nominations be closed and we cast unanimous ballot for Keith Bogman.
So, second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Nomination for the clerk.
I'll nominate Karen Brower for the clerk.
Second. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
Move the nominations be closed and cast a unanimous ballot for Karen Brower.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Treasurer.
I nominate Jayzon.
Treasurer.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations?
I move we close the ballot and cast a unanimous vote for Jayzon.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Last, assistant clerk.
I nominate Cindy Zellner-Halers for assistant clerk.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
Move the nominations be closed and cast unanimous ballot for Cindy Zellner-Halers.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, that motion is carried. Then, you did receive the current Sevastopol School Board Officers and Committee sheet in your, um, in your packet. Does anyone that's on a committee not want to be on that committee in the coming year? Or is there another committee you'd like to be on?
The only committee not listed doesn't even confer.
Yes, and we, and we can list that, but we talked about rotating that depending on
That's right, you're rotating, that's fine. Do you want to have that listed?
We should list it, um-
And that committee should meet in May, and I'd like to know which two board members are gonna be available for that meeting.
Um, so, uh, so that will be a regular committee? Won't be an ad hoc with a regular?
It's gonna be a regular committee, but it's gonna be quarterly. So, it'll be a regular standing meeting, uh, committee.
So, when is the meeting, do you know?
No, it's whenever the two board members, hopefully after school, would be convenient for the most employees, but I'd like it before the next fourteen.
I can come anytime, Mr. K. I could be here too.
Okay.
So, then-
Would like the seventh or eighth of May work? Seventh or third of May? Deb Danz, I've asked you since you were on the committee, is Tuesday or Wednesday work better for you?
Probably Wednesday because of track meets.
Okay, then Wednesday, eighth. Wednesday. Now, Alex Driver scheduled here.
Yes.
Meeting fur is on the eighth at three thirty. And this is Antoine's room.
So, Cindy and I will attend that one, and then as you move forward, the meeting first, where people might have interest or are available, that will rotate. Well, we don't have this as an agenda item, but if you, if there's a change to one of your committees, you want to add the other to a committee, let me know, otherwise we'll put this on the agenda for these appointments next time around. You don't have any guest comments. Carrie Mulray, you're gonna talk with Diane? You're Dawn, that you want to speak?
Oh, yes.
So, we don't have any other guests, we don't have any other guest comments there. Then, we do have the ELA textbooks with Diane Jenkins and Carrie Mulray. And the, well, I guess, yeah.
Are we gonna ready? We're gonna be, no. I want to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity tonight to consent our recommendations in our ELA journey. We gave you a wonderful thick packet ahead of time, and we appreciate you reviewing it, so we make reading a little shorter tonight. Tonight, we have with us part of our team. We have Deb Danheim and Dawn representing middle school. We have Carrie Mulray, who's representing middle school and high school. Callie Asher, who's representing special education. Katie Broders, Brooke, and staff representing elementary, and then myself. We're gonna give you a little highlight of our report. As you can see, our team was fairly big. We had seventeen members on our team because we wanted everybody's voice to count.
Uh, as Diane said, you guys got the packet showing how we've been working towards our new curriculum that we would like to suggest for you guys. And the biggest thing we want to point out is that this has not been updated since 2012.
So, Liz Holber and I kind of dug through WISDASH to see if we could see any patterns or trends to kind of support what we've been doing. And you can kind of see that, you know, in 2010, we kind of made some initiatives. We've been making very consistent growth. 2012, when we adopted our old series, we could see an impact in, you know, the next year, we're at fifty percent from forty-five, and then 2016 and '17, we're at seven percent proficiency. So, it's working, we're doing well. So, why would we want to update? Well, there's, we saw some gaps too. So, in our ELL population and in our socio-economic, economically disadvantaged population, there's a gap, but our biggest gap was actually getting, you know, wider, was our students with disabilities. So, we felt we need to find resources that were systematic, like our old benchmark was, but would tend to those gaps. So, we can start closing those gaps and continue our growth in teaching our students how to read.
Our process, we looked at our report card, and we dug deeper into the data that Katie was talking about. And what we did was, we started with a needs assessment survey as to what people were using, you know, if we were using the same things, um, and that's, that was our starting point. After that, we did a huge literacy inventory on the help of CISA SADA. Incorporated teacher interviews, observations of the programs that we have being used, looking at the reports out there for what ours, what we're using has or doesn't have, and dug really deep into that. Keeping in mind, we wanted to fill the gaps from the resources that we saw.
Now, kind of bring us to our vision, that we started to look at those gaps that we were seeing, like Katie and I had mentioned, and we came up with three really big ideas that we wanted to look at when we were looking at these different curriculums. That was the rigor and increased text complexity, as long as that differentiation for ELL and our students with disabilities, and our writing program. Really needed an updated, more user-friendly, student-friendly version. So, what we evaluated, you guys got that packet in there, was the scoring guide with a hundred different things that we had to go through and score each of the programs with. So, if you want to look into that, you got that. And then we did all of our numbers, and it came out that our new benchmark program, it was close in a lot of the grade levels, but K five, the new benchmark, did win out. And more specifically, it was higher scored in the areas that we were looking at, that increased text complexity, the differentiation, and the writing. Which is where Brooke is going to kind of highlight for you.
Yeah, um, so, when we look at what we're calling the new benchmark, the updated version of what the teachers are currently using in their classrooms right now. We really love the program that we have right now, but there were some things about it that, as we used it, now we've decided it'd be really nice if this would make, if this looked better. So, some strengths of the newest updated program, um, the text has a lot more rigor. The current text that we're using right now, the, the reading level and the material for the kids, it doesn't change really from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, which as the year goes on, the rigor of that text that kids are being exposed to should increase as the school year goes on. And so, we're seeing kids have a lack of engagement because it's not challenging anymore to them. The layout of the materials is much more student-friendly. It kind of looks newspaper material, so it doesn't necessarily look like you're actually reading a text. And so, that's kind of exciting for the kids. Something that we're working a lot on is the listening and speaking standards, and the current program that we're using right now doesn't really incorporate a lot of that. And so, this, the updated version of it does incorporate that. Also, there's a lot more help for our ELL population, but specifically what we wanted to highlight on here was the students with disability. So, the fifteen that you see on here, that refers to the fifteen categories that we were critiquing out of. And out of those fifteen categories, when you looked at the new benchmark, thirteen out of the fifteen areas benchmark received the highest score from the staff in regards to how other materials service kids with specific learning disabilities. And compare that with what was called Houghton-Mifflin, you know, they weren't getting the highest marks, in our opinion, as teachers. Otherwise, they were pretty comparable. That really stuck out for us. The teachers, there's more materials for the teachers, and it, it still has a reader's theater aspect to it, which the kids love. It's one thing that kind of has become almost a tradition at Sevastopol. Every three weeks, kids are rotating throughout the building, teachers are contacting other teachers, "I have a reader's theater, can we come and perform?" And it's just this natural experience for kids to practice their fluency, and, and they all love it, they look forward to it. And so, the new benchmark contains that. The other one we looked at, Houghton-Mifflin, doesn't have one anymore, so. Some weaknesses of the program that the elementary staff kind of decided that made us not interested is the text does not increase in rigor throughout the year. So, that was kind of a real big deal breaker for us. We wanted our students to be more challenged, and that's something that when CISA came in and evaluated our current materials, they said that it's not complex enough, and we need to do more for our students. We want to challenge our students. And we, as teachers, we can see that in the classroom, that our students aren't as engaged as they could be, and I think that comes with the materials that we're putting in front of them. Their phonics program in the new benchmark has, or I'm sorry, in Houghton-Mifflin's, it lacks lots and lots of practice. There's not assessments for teachers, so teachers are going to be creating everything, and it doesn't have a spiraled approach, so things don't cycle back. And in those younger grades, K two, the material really needs to cycle back a lot more for these kids to really nail down those skills. And then, as far as the special education component of it, it doesn't mirror the sequence of what the regular education kids are doing in their classroom. So, for Callie, what her students are doing versus what my students might be doing in the classroom, it's going to look different, it's going to feel different. And there is no re-re theater. And they're, they just, they had a lot of writing, but there was too much in it, and it wasn't very good quality in our system. So, this is kind of just a comparison where we weighed everything. This was what we're currently using, and this is just us saying, well, we don't like a roller program right now, what we wish was better. And then, the wonderful thing was, the most updated version of it, which is the one we want, they fixed everything, so to speak, for us. So, we were really thrilled with that. The rigor increases, there's more support for, for ELL students. We didn't have enough assessment materials, so teachers were creating a lot of their own assessments right now. This one provides a lot of those, and they're more challenging, and they increase in rigor as the school year goes on. Right now, our materials don't necessarily do that. And we also liked how to incorporate a lot of student goal setting. That's one thing that our program right now doesn't have.
Just to keep in mind, we started out for elementary with five different publishing companies, and we quickly narrowed it down to-
To the top two.
To the top two.
So, looking at special ed, currently, I'm using Houghton-Mifflin Journeys from 2011. It's, nothing's aligned with the classroom, I'm kind of, my own island is separate. So, we have to do a lot of pull-out instruction, and we have older版的reading books, and they're quite old, so the interest level isn't there anymore, so they're reading textbooks that they're just not really truly engaged in. I do also use other specialized materials, you know, to focus on specific needs if there's a reading fluency, or comprehension, or visualizing, visualizing strategy, you know, of course, there's always additional materials, no matter what we, what we use. When looking at the new benchmark, I was really impressed. I honestly, I have not seen a program that incorporated a supplemental curriculum, so... Sweetie shoes. I'm trying to figure this out.
There he goes again.
No, it's okay. So, the new benchmark has a supplemental curriculum, which is really awesome. I have, so you can see the spring forward is the program for K two, and then the steps to advance is for grades two through six. And what it has is, uh, each student has a My Reader text, and Katie has it there to show an example. For each lesson, she's my man-a-wife.
Open it up. Excuse. I'd love to open it for you.
For each lesson, if, there's a text that the general ed class instructor- The whole class is instructed with that text. So, the specialist students are exposed now to grade-level text, which is needed. If you flip back, there is a bridge or amplified text. So, it's the same text, but at a lower reading level. Same vocabulary, same comprehension strategies, all the graphical organizers are all the same, it's all very cohesive. If you flip back again, there's another text that is again at another lower reading level. So, now I can pick which text fits my students' needs. And now, I have materials that support more inclusion. This can be done in the classroom because they're learning the same topics, the same vocabulary, same lessons, and that's truly what we want. In addition to that, the guided reading texts are awesome, very high interest, at their level, it's wonderful. And not listed here, there's lots of assessments to track data as well. If we were looking at the Houghton-Mifflin, I would have to continue using my Journeys and my older texts, because there's not any additional resources that go along with that program. There is an online resource that, from Houghton-Mifflin, that I can go and like, kind of weed through and pick and print out worksheets, but it's nothing that's really, really cohesive. So, that's kind of what I thought.
Okay, uh, so, representing the six through twelve staff, we collaborated, six through twelve, to look at the, to prioritize our criteria, and we came up with a few things that we felt we need in our ELA, our English Language Arts program. Number one, I mean, they're really kind of all even, but we really wanted integrated, more integrated writing resources. This is probably sound a lot like what the elementary is looking for too. We really had a need for integrated grammar instruction. My second point up there is all literacy skills, but in particular, that grammar piece, we've used supplemental pieces in the past, and so, we'd like everything to be in our program. We looked, uh, we're looking for that rigor and increased text complexity as the year goes on for students. And we are, of course, looking for improved online access and improved materials for our ELL populations and special education students. So, those are the things that we really felt we want in a new English Language Arts program. And this is, this is, so then this was how we evaluated our texts, and you guys have this list, so these were the big things that we looked at, that was just how we looked at it. Okay. So, this was, we did a similar process to the elementary students, or the elementary teachers, and we scored the six through twelve texts, we compared the Houghton-Mifflin texts that were, um, well, we do currently have that text, and we looked at their new version, and we compared that with Pearson's My Perspectives. And you can see that they were pretty close, especially in nine, ten, and eleven, in grades eleven and twelve, they scored pretty close in a lot of areas. However, we felt it's important to have that continuity, six through twelve. So, for that, not just for that reason, but because we like the My Perspective text, that one, one out, is the one we'd like to recommend.
This is a picture of our current textbook, and we adapted it many, many, many years ago. It was fantastic at the time for what we all had to work with, the standards that were emerging, and it was a current, it was an existing textbook that they quickly adapted and identified essential courses, study lessons within this book. So, we didn't teach the whole book. It allowed us to start to teach those standards. So, like anything, the more that you know something, and we all got to know the standards better, the textbook companies are improving their resources they're offering, and we had, over the years, done much, much work to adapt this to work, to teach the standards supplemented where we needed to, and we can do that, and, and all of us have done it. You can give great teachers just about anything, and they're gonna make sure their kids learn. The idea though is, do you want that time spent on figuring out resources, or do you want that time spent directly impacting students one-on-one? So, you can look at the next one. So, we picked My Perspectives, and I'll, I'll highlight a few key ideas. For the high school, one of the things that stood out to them in the, for example, American literature, was more modern pieces. They're more engaging, interesting to kids at that age, and so, they were excited to see what was in there for those classes. The six, twelve program has been working on writing goals for a couple of years and really studying Kelly Gallagher's work, and the writing, integrated into My Perspective, is, is based on his influence and his program. So, we already understand that, we've bought into that, we see the success of that, and now we know we have to supplement it, and so, we'll do it. So, it's something we already use and have seen success with. Also, the integrated writing goes beyond his approach, but is, is also included in the types of questions they ask. They're open-ended and require a constructive response, which also lends itself to that deeper thinking and higher-order questioning, and, and it's not just a very simple, write there question, and fill in the dot because there's one answer. They have to really synthesize and think to answer it. A new textbook like this that's updated and is a better match to the standards, really, like I said, allows us to spend more time interacting with our students and not trying to find the things we need in order to do that. So, again, it was very close, we, we liked a lot of the Houghton-Mifflin program that it had to offer, it was a close call. I think for me personally, I kept going back to that level of questioning and thinking that it required. It just, it just had more to offer for what we're trying to do, and I think if we just remember that, you know, we don't know what the future looks like, what we're preparing our children for, we have no idea, it's changing that fast. So, we can't teach them content, we have to teach them to think. And this allows us to do that while we're teaching them to read, and write, and speak, and listen, and spell, and all of those good things. So, it's all in there, and I think it's going to allow really great teachers to do even better work, because we'll have more of our expertise directly impacting students and not looking for resources. Okay, we're at cost comparison. If you notice, the new benchmark with the special education supplemental materials is a little more expensive, it's eighty-one thousand, and then the supplementals are nine thousand. I am still negotiating with them to get this price down even lower, and every time they call in, I say, "No, not, not good." So, we're still negotiating. It is a little bit more expensive, but it incorporates the reading section, the writing section, the spelling, the phonics, and the speaking and listening components. It is a six-year contract, so, like we said, there's some supplementals the kids get, instead of, you know, the hard books in it, they get paper books, kind of like weekly readers. For six years, we will get those without having an extra cost. It also includes-
That's cost is for six years then?
Yep. It also includes the entire digital end of it, which is more and more, which allows us to give the kids even more textbooks or books that they can read that are online, but also for our resources.
So, is the Houghton-Mifflin a six-year contract too? Is that the-
Yes, yes. Houghton-Mifflin came in at thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty. The only extra cost for six years would be if we had additional students. Why did they come in so much? It's because they really wanted us to help. My Perspectives comes in at thirty-seven, and their intervention piece that coordinates with the My Perspectives is seventy-five dollars per student. So, it's a license, and, um-
And that's an annual cost, right? Seventy-five dollars per people, per year?
Yes, that is an annual, I'm sorry, I changed that. And for six through twelve, Houghton-Mifflin came in at forty-seven thousand, eight hundred. All of these came in with at least two days of professional development. I am working on trying to get more days of professional development out of them. So, it is costly, but one of the things that we talked about doing is, six through twelve would buy out of this year's budget, and then, K through five would buy out of next year's budget, and we would purchase it over the summer, and then we could get it started for in the fall.
So, when you say this year's budget, you mean the eighteen, nineteen budget? Yes, the twenty budget?
We have fifty-eight thousand dollars for this year's budget for it, so my recommendation would be to buy over the summer and pay half in June, half in July.
So, you use this year's budget and next year's budget to versus?
Right, right, and then, remember, social studies will be up next year, and then they'll come, multiple time year with recommendations for social studies, but our budget can handle it if we're over this, if we're over two budget cycles.
Just, just a curious question, how many students do we have in six through twelve?
Six through twelve?
Six through-
Six through twelve?
It wouldn't only be special education, it would be those students who were lower too. So, Carrie, what-
So, not three or twenty students?
She's trying to figure out intervention, seventy-five dollars.
That's not a whole student pile.
How many? We don't have any intervention. No.
Fifty, twenty?
We have twenty. Six twelve. Six twelve, I mean, twenty-five.
Okay, I just wanted to- I need a poll. I need a ballpark.
I'll leave the question. How, what is the, how do you guys, does the new benchmark, K through five, help, does it flow into the six through twelve? And so what you guys are teaching here, that, that- Not, might be just the names, right? The new benchmark, I don't know what that means, My Perspectives, two different names?
Well, they are different programs. But what flows are the standards. And that's one of the beautiful things about them, as much as people hate them and love them, is it does give you a progression. And remains a study that progressed nicely, K-12. So we teach that. And these are aligned to that. So whatever resource you use, if it's aligned well to your standards and you know your standards and you teach your standards and you're communicating across grade levels, that transition is smooth. And we do that in math because we have three different programs.
No, good. And continuing with education, right? Forever, they're, they're learning. And if we try to make that as smooth as possible, we get across that.
Absolutely.
And I think Deb made a good point before where she said the material, we're teaching them how to be better thinkers. And I think the material at the elementary level is supporting that same thing that you guys want out of the six, twelve.
Right.
You know, it's not just a CAM program and say, oh, we don't match you. It's kind of the philosophy, the way we're teaching the materials.
So just kind of the justifications of the class. And we kind of talked about that. So our recommendation is to order the benchmark, new benchmark with the special education supplements for elementary. And then the My Perspectives for middle and high school with the intervention component. Do you have any questions for us?
I think you missed some parole for the community out there. Anything that teaches listening to our kids? Jump off page. I mean, full setting's big. And in fact, we got to satisfy our special needs. So I mean, just for what it's worth. I mean, we have to do that. That wasn't really the question, sorry.
Thank you.
There are questions, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So just coming back to lessons.
Yeah.
Is the music department?
I think the music department.
You're the music department!
You're on the swing.
New Orleans.
Why don't you all start off by telling on me? I'm Cynthia.
I'm Lizzie.
Maya.
Rachel.
Lexi.
I love.
And I'm here to give a little recap on our wonderful trip to New Orleans. And you need to eat those beignets because, did you eat them up?
No, they were up.
They were up. You know, if you take them home, that would be memorable.
Steve put the camera on the kids.
Take them home and put it in your air fryer for just like thirty seconds, they'll be perfect.
That plans I don't look a whole lot.
Everyone's getting their travel.
All right. So as Sheen has already said, here are the present of our New Orleans and inspired trip.
There was forty-eight people, a twenty-hour bus ride each way, six days, and it was one school. This was our bus ride. On Friday, we went to cemetery number one, Armstrong Park, the preservation hall, and Mulattes.
Okay, so the cemetery. When we arrived in Noah, we jumped right into touring, starting with cemetery number one. This was the oldest cemetery that we got to tour. The whole cemetery is above ground and families are all in one crypt. A fun fact was you have to wait a day and a year to open a crypt if you were to put another body in. One of the graves is for the voodoo queen. And there are axes covering her grave because it was thought to be, oh, you were granted a wish if you put an axe on her grave. And Nicolas Cage's grave is also waiting there for him. The next place we went was the Armstrong Park. So after we walked through the cemetery, we went to the park of a legendary trumpeter, Louis Armstrong. It had unique artwork, statues, and bridges. We toured it for a while and just walked around and had fun. It was located on the edge of the French Quarter. And we were, some of us were even honored to see a jazz funeral. And at jazz funeral, they take the body and a band walks behind them and plays a Drouge, which is a slower, more sad kind of song. And then once they put the body in the grave, they play an upbeat and happy song because it's a celebration. It was a very sweet opportunity by, by the students to be able to stretch out our legs and take some fresh air in after a long bus ride.
The French Quarter is also known as Vaux-Care, which is French for Old Square. It's a six-by-thirteen block area and has about four thousand citizens.
We had the opportunity to go there three different days. We went Friday, Saturday, and Monday. And what's very unique about it is, as most people know, everywhere you go, there is jazz music, no matter what corner of the street or anything. There is a lot of food everywhere. And up in the corner up there, there's family bands all over. And that was really unique because you'd have elementary kids playing in the band. You'd have grandparents all at the same time. The city did smell interesting at times. And then there is Jackson Square. And the outside gates were always covered in artwork that artists were selling. It was different every single day. It was very cool.
After eating and exploring the French Quarter, the group met at the preservation hall, which is a music hall dedicated to preserving the traditional jazz music originally in New Orleans. We listened to soul-filling music and then we participated in a Q and A. We learned that in jazz music, the drums provide rhythm, the bass beat, the clarinet melody, the trombone were support, the saxophone, extra embellishments, and the piano keeps the flow going.
Okay, and then we had dinner at Mulattes, which is an Cajun restaurant and had dance floor there. We had an extraordinary experience at Mulattes. It's difficult to find a word that could encompass the atmosphere that we created. Here, we learned from a couple how to do Cajun waltz. Many students were pushed outside of their comfort zone and pulled onto the dance floor. And everyone after was full of laughter. And it was amazing. We were able to convince other people sitting around to come on the floor and dance. And we taught them all how to do the Cajun waltz that we just learned. And it created like a strong feeling of community and acceptance. We received compliments from a lot of people eating around there. And they were happy how all of us young people have so much fun dancing instead of on our phones. Imagine that. Our willingness to learn how to dance almost brought one of our teachers, that are teaching us how to dance of tears because lots of times you have to work really hard to get anybody on the dance floor. After, or right before dinner, we had a request to sing from someone in the crowd. And so the part for the piece called Papa Loco. This was a once-in-a-lifetime experience for many students on this trip. And I think on this trip, Mulattes could easily rank one of the top experiences we had.
On Saturday, we went to the New Orleans Museum of Art, the Sculpture Garden that comes with it, the National World War II Museum, and the Palm Court Cafe.
In that museum, there's three floors, three floors of beautiful painting, thoughts, and sculptures. It is true. One of my personal favorite parts was the Sculpture Garden. There's a huge spider where we all get a member and took a picture and posed and made fun of this.
There's the picture. We're trying to be like, honey, I shrunk the kids. Which we happened to watch on the way down.
Next was the National World War II Museum. And it was really great to learn about something which we just learned the week before in American history. I wish I would have been there a week before because we took the test right before we left.
There were lots of questions that we got wrong. The signs were like, oh, that was the right answer, okay.
It kind of reinforced everything we learned. There was these nooks. And you would go in there and press a button. And you could hear the personal stories from people on all sides of the war and their experiences. And then we went into a forty theater. And it was about D-Day. And the seats shook and there was fake snow. And it made it super realistic.
Okay, the Palm Court Cafe is where we ate that night. It's located near the French Market. And we, that night, we had a French, or a five-course meal, which included a lot of Cajun foods, including jambalaya and bread pudding and pizza. And then beside, or from the preservation hall, the jazz here was more formal. And it was, it was interactive as well. So we sang Down in New Orleans and You Are My Sunshine along the bay.
On Sunday, Sunday, we went to the Music Clinic, the Riverwalk Mall, the Marty Grau World, and Hard Rock Cafe.
Yeah, so we went to the clinic on Sunday. It was kind of a hassle trying to get all the instruments off and everyone get their instruments and get dressed with all of our formal wear and stuff. And so the choir met with Dr. Meg Frayn. And we sang her songs and we got some feedback back. And she had some really good analogies, like Ice Cream Belly. And then the band met with Dr. Serena Warren. She made the band sing in beatbox, which was very new to some people. But it helped us with rhythms and staying together.
All right, we also went on Bourbon Street. We tried beignets. There was a park there. It was called Musical Legends Park. And in the back, they had a beignet cafe. And you can see the beignets there. They are French pastry covered in powdered sugar. They are very messy, so they're delicious.
Make sure you were black.
Lots of us described it as like, kind of like an undercooked funnel cake, but it's just, it's really good. See for yourself. Everyone there was really friendly, as you can see in our picture of getting guests that jumped in. And the Bourbon Street runs through the city. It connects to the more modern part of the city. And in that part of the city, lots of the buildings have murals painted on the shelves, like instruments or like maps. It was really neat.
So we went to Marty Grau World. And when we first walked in there, you could see all these floats with all types of different colors. And then they brought us into a room and started talking about the traditions of Marty Grau, how they reused a lot of the floats, how they made floats for over forty different companies. And every parade has a theme. And they also wanted to raise some traditions in New Orleans. One of my favorite things that I saw there was my hero, the Chick-fil-A.
Oh, and I got the cake, well.
Oh, yeah. I got little baby Jesus. One of the, one of the traditions of New Orleans is what's called the king's cake. And whoever finds, they put a little baby Jesus, a plastic baby Jesus in the, within the cake. And whoever gets that is to make the cake for the next year.
And host the-
And host the party.
Host the party.
So who gets to do that?
He gets to come back for the-
He's gonna take it and have it now. He's the customer, he proves.
Okay, so then for dinner, we decided to go to the Hard Rock Cafe. It was filled with costumes and instruments from many famous artists, including Britney Spears, Elvis, and Amanda Shaw. They had very unique and colorful floors and a mosaic grand piano on the ceiling. And it was located on Bourbon Street.
On Monday, we went to Swamp Pride, Oak Alley Plantation, and Macha Steamboat River Groups.
All right, so the swamp tour was a lot of fun. Our tour guide was actually French and he came to New Orleans. So we took about a forty-five to ninety-minute tour on the river. And we got to see gators. And we fed some raccoons and gators some marshmallows. We even got to hold baby alligators and touch a three-toed salamander. We also got to see demonstrations on how to catch a crawfish properly.
Next, we went to the plantation. And we weren't allowed to take pictures of the inside of the house, even though some people did. But we did get to see the antique furnishings from the last family that lived there. The guide gave us the history of the families that lived there. And then we were free to explore the grounds. There was this fifteen-minute Sugar King documentary. And I think it's the first time I've ever seen a group of students quiet during an educational video. And we ate lunch and then we were off on our next adventure.
So to sum up our adventure in New Orleans, we went on a steamboat dinner. It was Buffalo style. And we had beautiful weather besides a little bit of ten minutes of rain that we had. So we all took cover in the boat. There was a jazz band that was performing. It was the Dukes of Dixieland. They're one of the original jazz bands that are actually still together in New Orleans today. This was a great conclusion for our trip.
And for the athletes, the workouts never stopped. There was late-night pool workout and what was more like an ice bath. Not warm, yeah. Even though it was seventy degrees there, it was freezing. Our early morning workouts in the small weight room we had there, we had almost all of the athletes there come down in the early mornings.
And when we stopped, we would do jumping jacks, run around the bus.
We would love to thank everyone who made this trip possible and a success, including our amazing chaperones, Ms. Sheen, Mrs. Hassanegier, our bus driver, Stephen Paul, families, and Sebastopol School.
I just want to add, if you want to hear these wonderful kids perform, they have concerts, some concerts, thanks to Martin. Please come join us for that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Nice work. Thank you for the beignets. Go enjoy them.
Make sure I'm not kissing.
We're just shy about eating in front of people. We told you our closed session. All right, are there any items that anyone wishes to have from the consent agenda? During non-sent agenda, approved by consent truly includes donations from the Sebastopol Education Foundation of one thousand dollars for the ECO Lab, Seal Tech seal coating for two hundred dollars for the high school football team, GSC, I don't know what that is, but five hundred dollars for destination imagination, the Jim Drew petroleum pump donation of four hundred and four dollars and eighty-nine cents. That was the March product pump amount. The Pioneer Athletic Booster Club, one thousand, two hundred and forty dollars for volleyball equipment, and the Altrusa Club of Door County of two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents for the music department. Thank you for all of those organizations. Administrators' reports. Mr. Phillips?
Yes. The one thing I'd really like to highlight is something that happened this evening. We hosted a wax museum. I'd like to give a shout out to Mr. Skiba and Ms. Thomas. They put together a really wonderful evening. One of the nice additions this year, Susan Cahout and Chris Milton came in. And they portrayed Susan B. Anthony and Elizabeth Stanton. Did a performance for those who wanted to come in and observe that. That was a really nice way to kick things off. And then it was just great to go around, see all the students participating. Their costumes were wonderful. And you could tell they, they put a lot of work into what they had done and had a lot of pride in what they had to present. So they really did a nice thing this evening. A number of parents on their way out complimented the staff on putting that together. So it's just really to see.
Having that up in the hallways was a great improvement over having it down in this room. You could really now hear the kids. It's good.
Big crowd?
That's it?
That's it.
I mean, you already posted your report.
In addition to my report, I just wanted to note that I'm really, really excited that summer enrichment registration is underway. We're over sixty students so far, with one leave that's been out. So really hoping that the next week and a half brings in more of the students. So I'm really looking forward to getting that up and running. And the other addition that I'd like to add is a conference that is going to be here in Sturgeon Bay for Trauma and Form Care and Resilience Conference. It's going to be here, yeah, in Sturgeon Bay at our Stone Harbor Resort. It's on August fourteenth. And I know it's in the summer, but one of my goals is to really put this out to the staff and our community here and to get as many people as we can. It's a collaboration between the Door County Human Services and also the United Way and the Stride Program. and also the United Way and the Stride Program. So really coming together as a community and bringing really good speakers in, really great topics that I know that our staff and our community can benefit from. So, that's something that I'm continuing to talk to staff about today. So if they're prepared and want to go.
Mr. Barrett.
Thank you. My report is filled with activities and celebrations. I just want to highlight a few of our students' accomplishments because there's been many. Destination Imagination sent three teams to global. Our forensic team had six state champions. Our new spa came home with yearbook award, blue ribbon. Newspaper award, red ribbon. And over forty individual awards which are just because of standing. We have the early returns for our February twenty-third parties in T-Tas. Our kids did amazing. It's the best score we've ever had in the time that all juniors have been required to take the test. So they did outstanding. The last thing I'd like to highlight is the upcoming events, just a few things. Tomorrow night we have a middle school dance. Saturday, of course, is prom. Monday is high school band enquirer and Tuesday is middle school band enquirer. So please come enjoy some of those things with us. Thank you.
Mr. Hiltz.
Before we end, could I just tell it? And I had sent out to the board members some information from WASB regarding proposals for the next state education convention in January and asked if anybody had any ideas of what we might do in the way of a breakout session. And Lisa, you had mentioned in your email to me that perhaps we could do something on ACT and how to get a perfect score.
Well, not how to get, yeah, that was kind of a jest, but something about the work that you do leading up to preparing students.
We have had a lot of, school districts contact us and ask us for our model, the way that we mentor students. We have our teachers act as mentors to individual students in preparation. We evaluate their gaps and their areas of improvement and also their strengths. Try to highlight that according to the test. So we work very closely with our students so that they can achieve their best score. One of the things that I'm really proud of is in all of our junior scores, we had forty-five kids tested and only eight percent of those students didn't reach a score of eighteen or higher. A score of eighteen is at least telling you that they're ready to enter college. But they're juniors, we have a year and a half, a little less than a year and a half to go. So we know that we are working really closely with, we're doing really well with the majority of those students. We have a critical rate of eight percent. But for ninety-two percent, children are disappointed with us. So, it is a great process led by a great group of teachers and I'm sure that they'll be willing to share that.
Is that about a forty-five presentation and is that on one day or two days?
You could do it once, just once.
If the, if the board or anybody is interested in letting me know if that really is the direction you want to go and I can talk to my team and work on something.
I think it'd be a real plus for the district. You'd have to submit and then the crew could.
Could we talk about the process for taking an application and submitting to the program?
Absolutely. Yes, I've got the information so I can stop and give that to you. I think it'd be a plus, why not?
Plus you'd be good at walking in, genuinely. Stop the war, ladies.
But it is a very good convention.
It is great. It is fantastic.
And there are also opportunities for kids to perform musically. We just saw our music through here. There are opportunities for kids to submit art pieces to be selected for display, so.
I did pass, I want to go to the art teachers later.
Okay, so, yeah, I'll see you at the.
I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you for that acknowledgement. Our staff works really, really hard to support our students because it is opportunity for them, this scholarship, this college entrance. And so that's why it's so important for them.
And I did just see too, I know you work on the athletic code of conduct with the other area administrators. And I see there is a rule change coming out now from WIAA regarding students who may have committed a felony. And that has to be incorporated into our code of conduct. So I'm assuming you'll be working on that with the other area principals?
Yes, we are reviewing some information, a coach's handbook actually, that we've created as a conference. And Mr. Hiltz is going to meet with us on that and take a look at some of the benefits of that coach's handbook. When maybe hopefully the day comes back to the board for further consideration.
And she's talked a lot of this for athletes and that was just approved last week, Wednesday. Overwhelmingly, yeah.
It's okay to say, and most people may know this, but this school had a perfect ACT test form. That does not happen very often, so I just thought you can't get enough attention to that, so. But you did a great job.
Thank you for pointing that out.
It's, that's a huge, there were four, there were four imperfect ACTs out of the thesis seven. I don't remember the schools, but there were four of them, so, good work.
Can I just say that 1.9 million students take the test and there was only 3,741 perfect scores, and that's nationally. Kaylee Mole deserves a lot of credit for the work that she did put in to achieve that result. And she's, she's a hardworking student, amazing results. Congratulations to her and her family.
Thanks, Jerry.
Yeah, I just handed out the minutes from, or the notes, I should call them notes, from the meeting confer. And you can, and I've read these past, the people that were present at the meeting and current concerns are listed there. I think they're all accomplishable, so it's a huge deal. Maybe there's going to be, we're still different, we'll find out on day nine. Eight, even better.
Okay. Anything else?
Oh, crap's sake, no.
Before we move back to core planning team for the building renovation.
Well, Sue, Dave, are you still on the council for planning team?
Well, I'll say, and I miss a couple because of schedules, but for some detail, the staff have been going through some excruciating meetings. And that I know just from building stuff. So there's been a lot of hard meetings that this staff has done and their inputs I think have been very good to Kyle specifically, to the builders, to the architects. And it's just, for me, I just am able to come and participate and listen because I don't contribute to classroom stuff. That's their sweet spot. And I think, but the hard work that this staff is doing needs to be recognized because I think the key there, we're spending a lot of money, there's a huge investment. And so a lot of the staff are putting a lot of their time into it. And I'm impressed by that and I tell them thanks.
Very thorough, I think. Our discussions have been great. I would echo Dave's comments on the staff and their input and the extra time that everybody's putting in to make this go, including you, Kyle. And Rock up there has done a fabulous job as well. And people are looking at all the different options and making sure that we're making the very best choices possible. And tomorrow, Melissa Malpar and I are going to Green Bay to look at career resource centers and find out what's new, state of the art out there. And we'll bring back those ideas for our next meeting.
And Mr. Hiltz has the art teachers scheduled to go to Port Washington. Somewhere in the day, I don't know exactly, but. Okay, so we are still researching designing, but it's getting better every two weeks. And every two weeks we get our stack of drawings and it's good stuff.
And we've got a good construction company because that guy is like on the budget all the time. You know, like where we are. And he knows off the top of his head if something's outside our budget, so.
He starts shaking his head while people are talking and then he goes, oh, we're going the wrong direction. So he brings us back, so that's, that's a nice thing we'll have admirer with, right?
They have lots of good recommendations. Last time we talked about flooring and they had all different sorts of options and the throws and pounds of each of those. It's, I'm learning a lot.
Something I will add to the WASB convention is they, this is their one-hundredth year. And they are looking for districts that might have historical mementos they can.
I sent them a copy of our sleigh bus.
Share.
Which they were absolutely delighted to have a picture of that.
To share with them, so after school's out, I want to start hopping around in the old minutes, just because I think there are minutes back there from 1924 to send them a copy of those would be kind of interesting. Or if there's anything else around the school that kind of speaks to our, speaks to our history. Budget.
I would like to point out on page twenty-three of your budget, about, oh, two-thirds of the way down to my item, maintenance services, buildings, twenty-five, forty-three, zero, zero. There's $200,000 there. Year to date, our expenditure's spent $43,267. So that means available budget, $155,811 and $0.25. So basically we spent twenty-two percent of that budget. I bring that up now because when we start talking about summer projects, that's what those funds are for. And between the nineteen-sixty-five gym, the cafeteria and moving the red shell back, which we have to move by fall so they can break ground in the spring, we'll go over in that area. But that's why we have such a healthy fund balance. But I want to just highlight that that's at $155,000. So when Rock starts sucking numbers, we go, holy cow. It's alright because we've held off on many building projects over the years and now's the time where to start moving, so. Rock has been really busy. I guess that kind of goes with the facilities, but. And Rock, we do have an item on here for summer renovation projects. So I don't know if your facility's reported, if you're going to go right from that or if you want to.
I can, I can wait a moment.
Got it. For the, just to give you a little update on what's going on with the financing and everything for the project. Originally, we got the band notes, which is the original twenty million. Tell the folks that band needs. Band has gone anticipation notes, okay? Those are the original amount of money, the original $20 million that we got to, for our financing of the original project. We got those originally and then the bonds were sold to pay for the band, for the band notes. We've gotten the bonds, the bands have been paid off and we made our initial $500,000 payment that was taken in through tax notice. That was done in beginning of April. Had a little issue with them getting our money, but we got it straightened out and it was on time, so. But that's where we're at, so now going forward, we will be making two payments each year. One on interest only and the second will be in principal and interest for the next twenty-three years. So, if that's on the $20 million, we still have $5.1 million.
I handed out a couple photographs that I took of some things that you're going to see in the building I'm going to talk about here in just a minute. I only wish that I could have went on some of these trips when I was at it. But in any case, what you see there, the very first one is not a picture of R2D2. It's actually a picture of the burner heated on one of our boilers down in the high school, in the high school boiler room. What you see there, the very top part, we actually need two of those pieces. And the very bottom part where you see it's kind of dark color, that is egg shaped and it won't go back in the hole that we took it out of. So we need to replace those. And why I'm bringing this up is, as you recall, this winter's been very bad as far as heating goes. We had a lot of heating related issues. Boilers worked, didn't work, control, I mean, it was, there were a whole myriad of things that were, that came up this year. When we pulled out of one of the high school boilers, boiler number one, and we found the damage there and we couldn't get it back in, we thought, well, seeing as though the building may not be here too many more years, what are we going to do? Do we fix it? Do we? And I think we're going to probably have to fix it. And the reason I say that is, is we have three boilers, like I say, there's two big ones, one small one. The one small one keeps us pretty, pretty good shape when we're in temperatures like we've been, say, the last month or so. Once it gets down to the zero and below times, we're going to need all three boilers. At least we always have in the past, especially to bring us up to temperature in the middle part of the day. That parts we're looking at right there is approximately $4,650. And we need, well, the top pieces, we need the top part for another one and that whole piece for one of the other boilers. So, grant tool and parts is $4,650. Johnson Controls has a contract with us in the school where they do heating and related services. Basically, they do, we tell what we want, dominate. So I'm going to try and get the labor portion of putting that back together in our monthly contract that we have with Johnson Controls. If I do it outside of that on a regular service call, it's going to be a lot more expensive. So we're just going to do that. The second page is what we talked about earlier with the flag pole. I spoke with a flag pole company, I sent them this picture and I said, our flag pole, our flag is broken. It's been broken for a few months now. It came down later, earlier in the winter. And Eric Leish from Affordable Tree went up and took a picture of it. So I sent it to the flag pole company. They said they have not seen one of these in many, many, many years. Believe it or not, there used to be a big golden globe on the top. That part that you see with the piece out of it actually spins. And it looks like somebody tried to put some kind of a piece in there to hang a pulley from to raise a flag pole up and down. So their recommendation was we would cut, take that all, try and get that out of there and then replace it with like for like if we can, if they can find it. Otherwise, they would just put a piece right over the top of the flag pole and put it on. But then either we would have to have someone locally with a boom truck do that or they could come up and do it, but they haven't given me a price yet. Most of that I just got, I just talked to those folks pretty much this afternoon, so. So that needs to be fixed in the very, very soon because we don't have a flag currently. A couple other things that I wanted to make everyone aware is our tenure capital plan. We have some air handlers in there for the elementary gym and the high school gym. Those are things that are going to have to be looked at relatively soon. So, again, you know, they're not anything that's imminent failure, but they're getting close and I just want to make everyone aware that when they're replacing air handlers, typically in that range of between ninety and $140,000. So it's something that we need to keep on the front burner. The high school windows, the windows in the high school are currently all single pane windows that need to be replaced. They're not being, they're not part of the facility upgrade. I have a quote on those for between $65,000 and $70,000 to replace all those windows. High school heating controls, a number of the heating controls in high school are still the automatic controls and they just don't regulate very well anymore. We're doing what we can to replace the thermostats to make sure that the thermostats are all the same. And I have those parts here ready. We'll be putting them in over the summer. So hopefully we have a little bit of a leg up next year so we don't have this huge fluctuation in the rooms, especially in the high school area of the building. Gym doors, door number sixteen, which is the door that comes into the elementary gym, the main door. Again, also on our tenure capital plan, that's $34,000 to $35,000. And that's getting real close to needing a replacement. If you look at it closely, you'll see that it's rusting quite a bit on the very bottom of the door. The interior doors for that same door in the neighborhood of $11,000 to $12,000. So you can see that's a pretty expensive project. I did want to talk just a second about some of the safety grant stuff. We are looking at putting new door locks in the doors down in the elementary gym end and also the high school end. A lot of our current doors are not locked correctly for the space that they're used for right now. So we need to replace those locks and also the cores, but that'll be part of the safety grant. First round, $25,000 to $26,000. It's right in that range, so. And that's pretty much all I have right now until this comes up later.
Rock, I have a question. And Kylie is in turn. Since the entrances of our school are going to change as far as where people come in and out, are we planning on keeping the flag pole in the current location or are we going to move it in front of the new entrances?
We talked, we talked about that somewhere.
Briefly with the core planning team.
The core planning team, someone recommended that our face is still Highway 57 and that that would be where we would leave the flag. That was a conversation. I don't know if it was a definite decision, but that's still our face, so keep the flag up there. Have you got any numbers in relationship to this?
I don't have any.
Thank you. I'm going to, the student report isn't on here tonight, but I have prom decorating, baseball and softball that our kids will be doing tonight. The student council.
I'm sorry, I'm slow on thinking. Hey, Rock, sorry, one, keep, go sit down, please. I'm loud, you'll hear me. As we, because we're doing this building renovation, if we start doing door work, would it make sense to talk to the builder and see what kind of doors they're putting on the new building so that we'd have common doors that we replace?
Yeah, I would hope that we would do that, Dave. I would think that we would do, you know.
Yes, sir.
Same movement of special light doors that we've been currently putting on.
Yes, sir.
I would think we would do that. It just makes sense from a, from a, you know, you need parts.
Should even ask.
Well, and also to do it at the same time that maybe they're being installed and so cost of installation should be less because we don't have to. because we don't have to let labor come more than once.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay.
The student council is wondering if there's going to be a sign made for Pioneer Way. I don't know who that falls to, but...
That falls on them as well.
Tech Ed. Tech Ed can make a sign, right?
Wood and metal, something like that?
You got to have a sign, you got to have a hole. You got to probably drill a hole for the, a road sign for the back road for Pioneer Way.
Self-help.
Oh, yeah.
We are working on researching a digital display for the lobby. Students are meeting with Mrs. DeYoung to write grants to potentially cover the cost of the boards. I don't know if that's for the current lobby or the new lobby. We need clarification on that.
If they purchase it now, make sure it's movable and not...
Students were concerned about the potholes on Pioneer Way, but since that discussion, they've been fixed. Thank you. And the lack of microwaves available during lunch continues to be an ongoing discussion. That's that report. So that maybe the building grounds director doesn't have to stay through all the policies. Would anyone object to moving New Business Item D forward to now?
I move that we move New Business Item D up to the agenda to now.
Does anybody want to second that?
Second.
All papers, yeah.
Hi.
Wish you carried just a lot about.
I love papers, as you can tell. First off, while I'm handing these out, I want to thank Lisa and Kyle for putting together the Blue Ribbon Committee that we had for the gym renovation. We had former coaches, we had current coaches, we had desert parents, we had, oh gosh, a NAR teacher, we had Michael. We had a whole number of people that got together. We met three times. We tried to meet earlier, but of course, the snow didn't help us back in March and February. So we finally got together in March, met three times, and came up with a whole, I think you'll find it'll be quite a... Quite a... Quite a difference in the gym, this is, when this goes forward. Okay. I don't know if that second one with all this stuff got around yet or not, but this is the one I'm probably going to spend a lot of time with. Well, this is our gym. This is the newest rendition that they just came up with. No one has seen this yet except me, so it's kind of fresh off the press. In fact, we have to buy a new printer because as I ran some of the stuff through the printer, ink was still wet. In any case, this is basically what our new gym is going to look like. There'll be bleachers. This, just to give you a reference point, this is north. This would be the door side where the doors are. This is the stage side. And then the bleachers were here, and bleachers here. The elevator entrance is over here, okay? There's a set of ductworks that comes out right here. And with the new bleachers, the way they're configured, we can't run, the current bleachers run tight against the wall. We cannot do that in the future. But there will still be bleachers along this side. There will still be bleachers along this side. So both the north and the south side will have a full set of bleachers in them, okay? The difference, the difference being is the new bleachers are going to be five rows high. We currently have six. They're going to be five rows high with 26-inch depth of seat this way. We currently have 22. What that's going to do is it's going to give us a lot more room to sit more comfortably. Because otherwise, as people sit, especially those of you who are taller than I am, have to turn this way to basically sit side-sat in the bleachers. So in any case, I think you're going to find the new bleachers really nice. They're going to be all black. We looked at getting the walls painted, and I'll go through that just a little bit. The walls are going to be white. I would bring one of the new lights in here that we're going to put up in the gym, but I'd be shooting, I could shoot Mars from here if that... So anyway, like I say, a lot of people had a lot of input into this. One of the things that came up from the volleyball side was they wanted to see the center of the gym more open. So we opted to go with side swing basketball hoops and get all the basketball hoops out of the center of the gym. Another thing they spoke of was that they wanted to see a lot more headroom, as much as we can in our gym. Our gym is really low. Our gym is 20 feet to the bottom of the beams. It's 32 inches beyond that to hit the ceiling. But in any case, it's really low by today's standards in a gym. It's also small. So we had some challenges. And in any case, some of the vendors were able to give us some batting cages that we could use. They may not be exactly what we want, but at least it offers us a chance to have a batting cage. And the reason being is because the beams in that gym are just a little bit too narrow and those kinds of things. So, anyway, that's kind of what the gym floor is going to look like when it's all said and done. There'll be more lines on it. We didn't paint all the lines on it, but there'll be more lines on it. Courts will still run this way, this way, and of course, lengthways. Basketball hoops will be side swinging. They'll have padding on the bottom. They'll still be, everything will be the same. But to get to this page next and the numbers.
Hey, Rock.
Yeah?
Sorry for even asking this. On the Blue Ribbon Commission, I'm sure I respect, why is Pioneer Paints face facing the visitor's side versus...
Absolutely. Now the home side.
Not anymore.
Oh, the home side. Now the home side.
The home side.
Because there's going to be a few, 50 more seats on that on the south end. Very strategic.
Since I'm talking, and this thing, it doesn't have batting cages. Are you going to talk to that, even though you just said I'm talking?
Yeah. What I was going to show you is, is there was a number of people that gave us bids. Some gave us, and not every vendor could give us a little, everything what we wanted. You'll see on the very first page is North Star Equipment. They are the vendor that came in at probably the cheapest bid for what we're looking for, but they do not have a batting cage. But a batting cage, if we go with the one that mounts on the wall, is not that expensive. So I'm going to talk to them some more to get some more, see what they can do for us for a batting cage.
Mounts on the wall and not on the ceiling?
Correct. There's only one said they could put it on the ceiling, and everybody else said no. And I'm not sure how they can do it, no one else can.
Do you want to speak about the structural engineer?
Yes, I'm going to.
Okay. All right.
You'll see the number for all the bleachers, the fold-up curtain, the basketball hoops, the safety pads. There'll be safety pads along the whole west hall. That's the wall where the doors are. There'll be two-inch safety pads on that side. And they'll be black to match the ones that are currently on the east side. Okay? We opted, the group wanted to go with a controller that's, we could go with what we currently have, which is switches on the wall. So the problem with that is that you always have kids playing with the switches and moving things that don't always know exactly when to stop with the switches. So we opted to go with switches on the wall. It was an extra $2,400. There was another one that was more expensive, which was 10-2. And I don't think that that's probably a good, unless someone tells me to do that. But in any case, for $2,400, what you get is basically a box that sits on the wall. You can punch in your code, and then you punch in I want hoops 1, 3, 2, 4, and they'll number them and show us how to use it and all that kind of stuff. And you hit the button, and they all go up together. So you don't have to sit there and hold the switch and do all these kinds of things as you're, like we do now. So like I say, the North Star Equipment quote came in as the lowest one. They also basically gave us everything we wanted outside of a batting cage. If you look on page two of that box, the top four numbers are bleachers, fold-up curtain, basketball hoops, safety pads. And they did not quote a batting cage. And you'll see a roll-up curtain there. If we want to go to a roll-up curtain, the first vendor also offers a roll-up curtain. It's another $1,900. And what the difference is, is a roll-up curtain, our curtain is called a fold-up curtain. The fold-up curtain right now that we currently have extends below the beam, which is one thing that the group did not want. So the new roll-up, fold-up curtain goes up that it's above the beam, the bottom of the beam, but not by a lot. The roll-up curtain goes way up. So it goes, and it's 14 inches down from the very top of the ceiling. So it's way up there. So again, we could opt for that and do that, but...
But this was better for the volley...
But this is much better for the volley.
For volleyball, because that curtain's not in their way now.
Yes.
Where the balls are.
The first bid, again, is Irwin Bleachers. Those are the same bleachers that are in the Bucks Arena down in Milwaukee at the Pfizer Center. So they're the same bleacher manufacturer as those. Porter is also all the equipment manufacturer, just so you, just to get a feeling why I was doing that. The second quote is Sheridan. They're Sheridan bleachers, and they use folding basketball hoops and IPI Bison for the curtains, or for their fold-up curtains. And again, you'll see the total there is $1,18,706. That's a little bit more than the $1,13,065 that we had for the preferred banner. Third one is Carroll Seating. They provided pretty much everything we had. But now, this one also said that they would provide a batting cage. A 55-foot Phantom, it's called. It basically spans from wall to wall in the gym, and there are springs that quote tight. And then we can add some options to it as well if we want to. In any case, you'll see their quote came in at $1,29,876, which is the highest one in the group. They also, they use PSS Garrett. So I'm kind of into PSS. PSS, P S I, PSS, I believe they're called. Performance Sport Systems, I think they are. So they are a very good, they are a very good brand name manufacturer. Of the manufacturers, I quoted basically the Porter and the PSS are probably the two most vulnerable ones. Moving on to page four. This is Haldeman Homie. They actually could not quote bleachers in the state of Wisconsin. They have a corporate policy where they don't quote bleachers in the state of Wisconsin. It's a territorial thing. They don't, they don't, corporate won't quote them. Their dealer network has to quote you. So, in any case, basically, you'll see here I have it listed under the fold-up curtain of $57,213. That was not just the fold-up curtain. That's a lot of other things are included in that price. Unfortunately, when you ask vendors to do some things, sometimes they don't break it out right there. Last but not least in this packet is the gym floor refinishing, of which you'll see is $21,095. I have calls into two other places right now to see about getting that number, if we can work, get that number down. Because I think that might be a little on the high end. I don't know until I get some, get some smothered. But if you look at all these quotes and you look at what we're getting for equipment, it comes up very, very close to the $55,000 to $57,000 range. So I'm pretty confident that what they were bidding was pretty much the same thing.
Rock?
Yes.
Couple questions. Some of the bids include disposal.
Yes.
Some do not.
Yes.
So like, the company North Star does not have any disposal?
Yes.
How is that...
That's included, that's included in the bid.
That's going to be included. Okay. And then, since they don't offer a batting cage, what is the price of the batting cage that you're looking at putting up?
There again, it was included in the price, and I don't know. They didn't, they didn't break it down.
No, North Star's not included.
Right. They didn't include, they didn't include a quote for a batting cage, and I want to talk to them about that. Again, most of these things came in today. So what you're seeing on there is pretty fresh stuff. So I haven't had a chance to even hardly look at it, but... I do have a couple of questions at some point.
There is a page two of 55-foot Phantom batting cage. That was included.
Right.
So it doesn't mean individual price.
Sure.
So that's what the follow-up was.
Oh, but North Star bidding for that?
But I'm just saying, North Star is not included.
North Star may not.
Right. So I think her question is...
If we were to go with North Star, what are we going to spend?
Right, right. We have a batting cage from Carroll.
And you're just getting this information, Rock. But she's asking about an apple, the apples and pears. And then you'll get there.
Yep.
But that was a good question, because I saw that too. So that lowest price, if anyone sees this, it isn't the lowest. It's more costly yet.
But Rock's, you gotta get moving on worrying with bleachers.
I need to get moving on ordering bleachers because there's a 10- to 12-week lead time on some of the bleacher manufacturers. Some are as little as six, some are as much as 12. And 12 weeks from now, to get the bleachers in and get them installed, I got to get going on those. So I need a, I need a bleacher manufacturer. And Irwin came in as the cheapest.
Has your group, your group has seen all of these options?
Nope.
One of your options? Right.
Yeah, pretty much.
Well, so, I don't, so you guys are looking at, I just, my... Cheapest always doesn't mean it's the right purchase price for someone who's going to use it for a lot.
And again, like I say, I quoted all good brand name companies. Like I say, Irwin is in at the Milwaukee Bucks Stadium. That's the bleacher, exactly, the bleacher system we're going to get. So it's a good bleacher system.
Okay.
There are a number of bleacher systems out there. Hussey makes a very good bleacher. And Hussey is also one of the ones that I quote. But they were one of the more expensive.
Is your group setting to meet them?
At this point, we haven't set another date to meet. We could very well do that. But I need to get one of the bleachers quick.
Right, I understand. It's just that they're the ones that have been looking at all of these in detail in the brochures and such. I just kind of feel like they should be involved in this as well.
And now, if you, when you order, is this an à la carte menu? Or when you choose to order the Irwin, you are going with North Star in this bid?
As a package deal, that's what they came up with.
Right, so therefore you are because you have to order the bleachers, we need to make you will make a decision ASAP on the whole kit. Let me just go tracking.
The second one is the lighting. You'll see there's two bids in there for lighting with Massart Electric because Massart does a lot of our lighting systems. As you'll can see, they're considerably more higher than actually the first one is the same company that put in the lights the last time. The fluorescent lights that are in there now is the same company that will be putting in these lights.
That's the top one.
The top one. So I guess there again, my recommendation because they're less expensive. And the only thing I do want to make you aware of is the lights in the top guy are not made in this country. They're made in China. But they do have a lot of certifications and evidence all the way through. I asked them to give me documentation that they could take a hard ball at two hundred or a hundred miles an hour. They did that. So I'm pretty confident they'll they'll hold up pretty well. The other ones are Hubble's and Hubble's pretty top of the line light. So again, we can, you know, that that's not quite so critical and we can maybe talk about that. My bleachers are the ones I really got to talk about.
So that light that you showed us that blinded everyone is what Massart installed?
Well, the Massart would be this very, very similar light, only this is made by Hubble. The other one is made in China, but there's a considerable price difference there.
Yeah.
So again, that may be something we want to discuss. This is the this is the painting. And I think I know. The painting you'll see here, there's two lines. One is the gym, one is the cafeteria. The cafeteria came well, the gym came in at twenty four thousand four hundred and ninety four dollars to paint the gym. I am one hundred percent certain we can do better than that. I actually called Door County Home Improvements and we're having some difficulty having them give us a quote. Mr. Littke also called.
We've called them for three weeks.
Yeah, for three weeks now. I've.
Door County Improvements.
So if anybody knows any of those books over there.
Well, they they Rock got good recommendations from Lena's School District because of the work they did in their gym. So we thought, well, it's a big company. It's in Sturgis Bay, but if you call them, you'll lose them.
It's Tim and Ryan.
That's correct. They will call Rock back, they will call me back.
They actually did a they actually did on second floor. They did the whole center section for us on second floor a couple of years ago. Did a fantastic job. That's why I wanted to include them again. And they came and looked at everything and they said they give us a bid and they never came in with a bid. So I called them and called them and called them and Kyle called them and they haven't got back. So I've been trying to do it as much as I can locally, but.
Well, we'd like to do local and cheap. With Lena giving us a good report that they're happy.
So again, that that's a little bit, I mean, that one could be a little farther down the down the way, but.
Painting.
Do you have any bids for a new P A system or sound or like making you actually hear people when they're talking?
And actually, as part of this, I also need to get another bid for acoustic panels. We're waiting for an acoustic panels, flags, because the committee came up with a a plan, I guess, for lack of a better word, where they want to take a lot of the things that are in our gym now and move them other places. So like some of the individual things would go into maybe the front part of the into the elbow. Where you see a lot of the sectional trophies as you walk out of the gym, there was talk about where we could put those in the future. And sprucing up the whole facade of the you know, where you come into the gym, changing that around, moving a lot of banners and plaques and all kinds of things that you see there now and incorporating that using the gym boards and bleacher boards that we took out of the existing gym and somehow make something. And Mr. Kiff had quite a plan, as I understand it, from how he wants to put those boards on there and then mount a lot of things on there to try and spruce up that whole area. So and that includes trophy cases in the front, all kinds of things, so.
We could get a new P A system.
Well, we would have to run it though with the new acoustic panels if that improves our P A system. Because it's not going in hard to hear. We need to do some acoustics, right?
But to get to get back to your point, Keith, is the the sound system that's in there now was put in not that long ago. I believe it was only like three or four years ago. So the sound system is in, you know, good shape really. It just is.
In the high school. I mean, I know we improved the elementary gym one, but.
Nope, they did. They redid the high school. But the acoustics are not very good in there. So we want to put acoustic panels in. They want to add team flags along one wall. We want to add state championship, state runner up on another wall. Take all the sports and take regional champ, sectional champ, whatever that may be with dates on it, with banners on another wall, and then incorporate acoustics in within all that. So there is a plan out there to do that. It just is I haven't gotten a bid on it.
Are there there's minor, are you like there's some new gyms now have like home team, away team, student section?
Yeah, we're telling them to sit.
Yep.
Why can't I let that?
Well, one of the things that one of the things that came up, we went round and round with painting. You know, we said, well, what part do we want out of the gym? A lot of people had a different idea. So in any case, we settled on twenty four hundred dollars for one. So we decided that the gym would be white, although there would be some accent walls painted. If you look on the east side of the gym where the stage is, we're going to paint that whole wall white. That was our first kick at the can. Second one was we're gonna fix up the the curtain, painted a different color, put a different vinyl on there, do that kind of thing. But an interior lady came in and a designer came in and said, you might not want to do that. That's maybe going to be a little bit too much loud. So they said, let's tone it down just a little bit and they went with red on that wall on the two sides of where the curtain is. The square board's on one side, the flag is on the other, maybe playing reference. So they would go there, we'd clean up just about everything on that wall, take away the clocks, whatever we didn't need to have there and just make it red. Then we were going to paint a red stripe around the outside of the room. And again, she said, you might want to wait because that's a little bit too much, especially when you start putting all your flags and banners and everything else in there. It just might be too much. And she said, that's something you can always add later, same as the curtain. You can always add that later. You can always paint it later. If you want to paint it, we can do it later. But it's hard to paint it, change the graphic, do a lot of that kind of stuff and then go back and go, wow.
Well, you know, red is an inflammatory color.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't paint red in the treasurer's office.
Yes.
Not a good color in the treasurer's office.
We got enough inflammatory.
That's right. You don't soak the fire.
So in any case, that's kind of around the gym right now. Like I say, I have to get going on the bleachers quickly. These numbers came in, some of them came in as of five o'clock tonight. So you're getting them just about as fast as I'm getting them. I have really had a good chance to sit down and look at all the quotes one hundred percent perfect and make sure they're exactly right. But I plan to do that tomorrow. So I mean, I'll look at it and if I see anything that's done so, then we can get the committee together, whatever we need to do.
Leader done.
And that's what Rock needs. He needs the green light to get the bleachers ordered.
The bleacher, the bleacher is a big one.
We need to get it in some direction.
To act on the bleachers.
Right.
I'm gonna I'm gonna touch real quickly on what Kyle mentioned earlier, a structural engineer.
Yes.
We were told that we need to have a structural engineer to put the new basketball hoops up because they don't mount basketball hoops to the beams like they used to back in either of them. They're now put in the where the if you can picture the beams in the gym, they go way up high with bolts all the way through the beams and they tie bolt them together on both sides. That's the way they're installed nowadays. Those beams have cables in them. They don't want to hit one of those cables and do something with the integrity of that beam. So they want to have a structural engineer, a structural engineer come in and do an analysis of that beam to see exactly where those cables run. So that's will be an additional cost under what you see here. Also, I want to bring up, there's going to be additional wiring to have. We need to have power now to power all these bleachers because the bleachers will not be electric. They'll have A D A as a component with them. A D A will push in, pull out, so you can use the bleacher as a full bleacher or you can use it as A D A. There'll be pendant control, so you just click the thing and walk your bleachers out and walk them back in. But all that needs to have wiring hooked up. No one knows exactly where all that stuff is going to go and where it's going to be. So that's going to be an additional cost that's on there. So there's going to be some. So like I say, you know, you're looking at about a hundred and sixty eight thousand right now just for the gym. And there's a few things that we don't know.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve or you have bleachers, approve the building grounds record bleachers for the high school gym?
I'm hoping to approve the ordering of the bleachers from Irwin.
Well, he's going to, oh, that's your decision. But then that's how about you? Okay, okay, we make that first.
Okay, can I have a second to that?
Second.
Other discussion.
So my actually, my only question is we can make a motion to buy something. I don't recall Irwin because what I just heard is you still got to scrub these things and what is or isn't included. So I'm not sure that because it's one thirteen, it's probably not an accurate price. So between the evaluation of quality and cost, once you get apples to apples, so I want to I'd say give them the approval, but maybe Irwin isn't the final answer. Because what you're saying is you're going to buy Irwin no matter what. So there means we're getting this package right here. And if that's where you're at, then that's mine.
They're actually they're actually the lowest cost bleacher.
Well, I know, but the government, the batting cage.
I I think you.
What you just told me is when you order bags, when you order bleachers, you order everything on the thing by by a package deal.
I think the group is too big to make that kind of decision when it comes down to the pricing and everything and putting it together. I think between Rock and myself, I think, and I hate to just take control and tell you that, but I think too many people like it's too big and you start talking about the curtain, you start talking about the basketball hoops and we should get these and those. I think it's got to be Rock and I got to get better numbers and then make the best decision. That's the.
That's why, right, that's why I don't think we call out Irwin. I think we give you the approval to do that analysis and make a decision. Can I make a friendly motion?
Just order the bleachers.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Yeah, but don't we also have to have the electric the electrical consultation? To be included in this?
Well, the only thing I would offer there is the long lead item, we have to do the electrical. We got we we need new bleachers.
It wouldn't matter which company brings the bleachers, the electrical guy. Yeah, any 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 bleachers may be electrical. You know, I guess they probably still do like.
And the curtain.
We're going to do it.
We're doing it right the first time.
Wait, so please, I had better, like I say, a lot of this stuff came just five o'clock tonight. You're seeing as much as I have.
And they and they don't give you apples to apples on us. So I guess my question is you give Rock.
Did you approve the amount? Yes, we will do the second.
I second.
You approved it.
I approve your. What I've done is I've asked every vendor to give me a itemized list of everything and the cost, the name of it.
I I would agree that the committee, this is a function now. They've gone, you know, talked about the aesthetics and how things should be, but now determining those costs and what's the best way to go should be a decision by the building grounds director and superintendent. Anybody have any other questions or discussion on that motion to approve orders of bleachers? Turn down all the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Next one's cafeteria and I'm going to be real quick about this one. Basically, this last sheet I gave up was about the electrical for the cafeteria, replacing a lighting in the cafeteria. So instead of a two foot by four foot panel like you see here now, there's twenty four of them down there. There'll be the same number of panels, but they'll only be two feet by two feet. And they put out more light than the lights that are currently here because they're LED. So we should see a significant savings on there. In fact, you'll see on the very first page, they give us some some numbers about what it's going to cost to put it in. I have also all the supporting documentation of what we're going to gain back energy wise from doing this as well. So if you look at that, you'll see that the the first one was N W Lighting Solutions again. They were at thirty nine hundred and eighty dollars with a focus on energy grants. And if you look at the second one, they were fifty six fifteen. So again, that's something we might want to just talk about a little bit because they're fairly close, but they're still a pretty good gap there. Again, painting for the gym or for the cafeteria, excuse me, sixty seven hundred and forty one dollars. They're painting the ceiling and the walls. Again, I think we can do much better than that. So as soon as the other company calls me, I think we can do a lot better job than that.
So do you need a kind of approval on the lighting for the cafeteria tonight?
I guess that would be.
But I think.
Casey, do you have something to say?
Casey, I don't think we're bad, so like.
Come on.
What's that? Hold the camera. Put the camera on, Stephen.
Oh, we have a dark display. A moonlight.
Oh, yeah.
Wow.
Right.
Do you have beignets too?
No food.
Let's see. You have enough.
Well, I I actually helped get those.
Oh, thank you.
I did.
Thank you. I share this space.
You can have some.
Here's a copy of the, this is just the cafeteria quote that we got from E B I.
And again, I've been quite as involved with the cafeteria as I have with the gym.
Right. But I love your I love your presence. So we've got a group together for most of the year, I think. Two people that aren't here and we just come up with like some more aesthetic designs really that to change the environment that's in there. That includes changing the ceiling, painting it, which Brock told us probably a bunch of that to quote. That included moving the ceiling tiles completely, just leaving the exposed beams. And painting, changing some of the floor. We have a lovely tree board that we came up with.
A tree. It's. I'll I'll help explain. Maybe in the middle?
Sure.
This is.
So when we got together, we talked about how the cafeteria is kind of dull and boring and old looking. And we just wanted to spruce it up and make it more fun for our students in the hopes that maybe they'll hang out in there more and not eat their food in two seconds and leave. And so some of our ideas, we'll talk first, we wanted to take out the old acoustical ceiling panels. They're low, they look dirty, they're just icky. So when we had first removed it, we noticed that there was lots of space up there and it sort of had a cool vibe because it's sort of industrial looking. So we thought, why don't we expose that? But to keep sounds down, you know, because we'd be taking out those acoustical tiles, we wanted to put in, there's a little picture here, but a lot of schools and things are getting those acoustical things that sort of are suspended from the ceiling. And so you'll see in our picture, but we are going to have some red on that picture. But we're going to put red ones installed at different heights just to give it some visual interest. New lighting. And then for the walls, this this is sort of messy looking. It's not really what it's going to be like. But our idea is to draw a mural on some of the walls that would include sort of graphic doodles. You know, because kids like to doodle and our idea was that we would have different sections representing the different things that Sevastopol has to offer. So like the different clubs, we have a or you know, we have a sports section and a science section and a with just little doodles that kind of represent all of the things that Sevastopol has to offer. And then in those doodles, we would include some encouraging quotes and things about kindness and, you know, different ideas like that. So we also talked about maybe you can make some community things like farming community and like lighthouses and lakes and having those kind of black and white graphics and then coming in with pots of colors throughout. So it will mostly be black and white to have that real graphic look, but then we would color certain things with just a little bit of color in there to give it some interest.
This bus looks really busy right now because it's not going to be the entire wall. It's going to be like the band that will go along the wall. Probably about the width of that red band there with the picture of the school on it. But imagine it going horizontally.
We were thinking like four or five.
Right. And that would kind of frame the two long walls. This would be that regular wall, this one's the center block wall. And then to kind of continue that band where the we'd make that band maybe the red band or something for some kind of your colors to tie in.
We would have, our original idea was to have some sort of awnings built over the the windows to make it more of a cafe feel. But I don't know if budget will allow us to do that, so that might have gotten mixed, but.
Think about with this, first of all, let's you know, look at this and this is nothing at all. So this is one of the, the render that she came up with. Not new tables.
No, that's just their like stock photo of tables, but right currently, right now, the floors have blue tiles in them. So we want to pop those out. There, Rock looked for us and I think there are some extra red and black ones available.
Just like this. Yeah, so if you look at this floor.
Imagine that cafeteria. This is how it's looking.
And also the we just the way we look at the these pendant lights, which were part of the original discussion, but the the two by two square L E D lights that we were just talking about. There's a better view. So I think that we decided to eliminate those awnings just because of the the space, because if they are, I mean, little kids could grab on it, even under ones in the norm metro, some of those pit creators could grab on to those buck them up. That's removing the ceiling tiles, painting everything black. There's a very minimal ductwork or electrical underneath those tiles, which is really kind of surprising.
So you're talking about making the ceiling black, you said, and then using the red and white?
It's actually a really, really dark gray I have to fish them up. Cool. Yes, we had discussed a couple of things, not in the actual final design or the delight, the square. We talked about wrapping the all the stainless steel in like a wood vinyl. That's been removed. The highlighted portions in the budget or the quote I sent you are removed from the, so on the backside, you'll see like the adjusted or that I did. So and then there's the the ceiling detail. And keep in mind too that the white, the square lights will break up all that red and black a little bit more. This.
Is this something that you think you can complete this summer, this these murals?
Yeah, I think so.
We're working on it.
Because like those show them going almost to the floor, but they're not going to.
No.
And that's a good clean element too, that the lower area where the kids are always touching is going to be probably white and that detailed area is going to be a little higher where they don't tend, kids, things don't bain against as much.
Right. Consciously single twenty four hundred dollars for sure.
Great watching with that information.
Are are we hiring people to do the doodles or? I mean, I just, that's that is wonderful. Well, that was what I mean, it's a lot of your time and make sure you thought that through or whatever. Get that figured out. It'd be awesome, but I mean.
I don't, I think once you get going, it'll go pretty quickly. I mean, I don't foresee it taking more than like two weeks.
I think more time is worth something.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think.
Because I would almost say get a bid on it.
Because you want me to come in and paint. They got some talent and some skill and they're.
That's why I was asking, I appreciate all, I've heard nothing but great things and all these ideas you've been doing and now you're suffering. So I'm excited to see it.
I just think it's important.
Think about that or propose something or.
I just think it's important to to note that, you know, there's going to be a lot of new elements to this school when our doors open in the fall of two thousand twenty one. And our our parts of our school that are going to be. And our, our parts of our school that are going to be here now and here then, need to have some kind of facelift, because it's just not going to look good. And it's going to be like, well, this part's old and this part's new. And so, when they walk in those doors, it needs, you know, it's not everything's going to be new, but it's going to be freshened. It's, you know, it's, it's just, it's almost a necessity. Bleaches are a safety issue that needs to be happening, but, you know, improving that gym and making it more attractive. And then the cafeteria gets used for lots of things outside of lunch, it's a classroom space, and lots of clubs, and, and teams meet there for different events and school things. So I think it's, it's great to give the whole thing a, a bit of a facelift where we can't tear it down and replace, so.
Additionally, I think our sophomore juniors and seniors to be, I mean, here all about this new building in two thousand twenty-one, and who cares, they're on the door, right? So what's it for them? Here's something that's for them now, and will stay for the next generation. So, yeah, it's exciting.
That's true.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Awesome. Is there something here in the gym, on the cafeteria?
It's in the bucket.
Project that you need.
It's in the.
In the bucket, you can do it.
I would like a motion to say move forward, uh, cafeteria project.
I move that we move ahead with the cafeteria project, uh, with the consideration, figure out an agreement if they're going to be waiting to find out a fair payment.
I'll bring that to the table.
The lighting, what is, is some real critical to, your next meeting is. What was that?
Do you have a recommend, oh, he's talking about the lighting, he's looking for a pool on the lighting. Is there one of these you're writing down?
I, I would say the first one, the very first one.
Any W lighting solutions?
Yeah. Because that'll be the same company that will do the gym and the cafeteria.
And the.
Okay, yeah, lights or lights.
So the gym project and the lights.
Oh, you want both sets of lights? Do we have to?
No, just those lights right there for the cafeteria.
Yeah, that kind of dovetails right into what they want, I mean, from a timing perspective.
You want one another for lights for the gym as a cafeteria.
I was actually asking, you want one motion for all of that?
Okay, sure.
Am I amending or where are we at with that?
The motion.
You just made a motion.
Yeah, it's here so far.
Hasn't been seconded, just.
Right.
I'll continue it.
Oh, continuing on. And then, continuing on, clip that out, Chris. And, and including the new lighting solutions for the cafeteria. And for the gym. And for the gyms.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Other questions or discussion?
Carl, did you get that?
Working on it.
Wait till he's done.
Fired all those off at the beginning, never asked me if I had.
Mike talked to Clayton, because he's kind of, he's a love.
Well, he's, he's in on the committee, he is to show up tonight.
He's on the committee.
Because he's doing some gym, he's doing some painting in the foyer of the gym.
He's made it. What have you thought to say? He's made it kind of clear he's not interested in participating in the, in the murals, as far as I understand.
Okay.
Well, he told me to do the primary pride in the foyer of the gym.
Okay, well, that'll be a step, right?
Yeah.
Let me read this, let me read this back to make sure I got everything. Uh, I got a motion by Mr. Cackerman with a second by Mr. Zahn to move ahead with the cafeteria project as proposed, with, uh, paintings and including new lighting solutions for gym and cafeteria. Do I need to add anything in there of what you've said as far as?
I'm okay if they're going to just work that option.
Okay, then that's the motion.
Any other, any questions or discussion? Hearing them all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, um, we move on to the second reading of policies. These are policies that we got our first reading of last month. The school board has had these ahead of time, so they could, um, read them a second time around. So, I move for motion to approve fourteen-sixty physical examination.
Move to approve the second reading of policy fourteen-sixty physical examination.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Zero-one-four-four-point-one.
I make a motion to approve the second reading of policy zero-one-four-four-point-one compensation.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Zero-one-six-one.
Move to approve the second reading of policy zero-one-six-one parliamentary authority.
Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Zero-one-six-four-point-two.
Move to approve policy zero-one-six-four-point-two special meetings.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. One-two-one-three.
Move to approve, uh, policy one-two-one-three student supervision and welfare.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Two-one-three-one.
Move to approve policy two-one-three-one educational outcome goals and expectations.
Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Two-two-seven-zero.
Move to approve policy two-two-seven-zero religion in the curriculum.
Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Two-four-one-two.
Motion to approve policy two-four-one-two homebound instruction program.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Three-one-two-zero-point-zero-four.
Move to approve policy three-one-two-zero-point-zero-four employment of substitutes.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next to thirty-one-thirty-nine and forty-one-thirty-nine.
Motion to approve policies thirty-one-thirty-nine and forty-one-thirty-nine staff discipline.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Policy four-four-four-zero job-related expenses.
Move to approve policy forty-four-four-zero job-related expenses.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Five-five-one-two.
Make a motion to approve policy five-five-one-two use of faculty by students.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Policy five-five-three-zero.
Move to approve policy five-five-three-zero drug prevention.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Five-six-three-zero.
Move to approve second reading of policy five-six-three-zero courtful punishment.
Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Five-eight-seven-zero.
Move to approve policy five-eight-seven-zero student protection of goods and services.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Six-three-three-zero.
Move to approve policy six-three-three-zero leasing school property.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Six-five-two-zero.
Move to approve policy six-five-two-zero zero deductions.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Six-eight-three-zero.
Move to approve policy six-eight-three-zero audit.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Then we have a second reading to delete policy zero-one-six-five-point-three.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of the deletion of policy zero-one-six-five-point-three special meetings.
Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Move on to new business and the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school calendar.
Well, we made it through April, no snow.
Yes.
No snow.
On Saturday.
No snow days. We've got snow, just had no snow days. So, we had a pipe break on Thursday night from, uh, February twenty-eighth, so March first, we did not have school because of the broken pipe. We'd already adjusted the calendar for the top half of what you had. So because we didn't have school on March first, we need to have a student attendance day on Monday, June tenth. Last year, we made our second adjustment to the calendar, because we had to do it twice. We had the teachers stay until, the students stay until two, and the staff stay until four on that Friday. I have two choices for you here. A is teachers will stay until five p.m. on Monday, the tenth, to check out, or be teachers up in service on Tuesday, the eleventh. The issue with having in service on June eleventh is our admin team and some teachers are going to an RTI training on the eleventh and the twelfth, so they won't be here, so.
I would think they'd want to be out of here.
I would think so too. So I think our principals can get their folks checked out on the tenth, but I'm just giving the option, but, and, we'll look at the next item next about the time they're waking up, so already, because they've already been coming in early and late, so time-wise, it's okay. But do you guys recall how many folks are going to go on the eleventh and twelfth, possibly?
I have a, a team of seven or eight, including myself.
Okay, so, we're gonna get.
Well, I'm figuring, I think, well, you guys, I'd say, whatever you think. I assume let's get you out early by Monday.
I think the tenth is good, because they're going to take seven teachers with them still.
Well, four teachers.
Four teachers and three of them, yeah, so.
So you want a motion to add Monday, June tenth as a student attendance day and option A?
And have teachers check out by five o'clock, right?
Someone likes to make that motion?
I'll move to have, uh, Monday, June tenth as a student attendance day and option A, with the teachers staying until five to check out.
Second. Are there questions or discussion? Carl, are you ready with that?
I have a motion by Zahn with a second, my brother, to approve revision of two thousand eighteen-nineteen school calendar and include adding Monday, June tenth, two thousand nineteen as a student attendance day, and have teachers stay on hand until five p.m. to check out.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Employee handbook, teacher's snow day, two thousand eighteen-nineteen.
During the first conversation meeting, we had a discussion about college time with teachers' miserable snow days, and their recommendation was to start showing up earlier and staying later, so changing the work hours from seven forty-five to three forty-five to seven thirty to four o'clock for the remainder of this school year. And they started that on their own the day after spring break. So, we should put it in the handbook, so that it states and states, because it's a handbook issue, so it's good the staff's doing it, but we ought to recognize it though.
So would someone like to make a motion of that, with noted as the change?
Move to approve the noted change to the employee handbook regarding teacher's snow day, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
Second. Maybe state the word first.
You want me to read what I have?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, I have to approve the revision of employee handbook stating work hours for full-time teachers are seven thirty a.m. to four p.m. for the remainder of the eighteen-nineteen school year.
Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Um, Nicolay Bank debit card logo request.
Nicolay Bank has reached out to us wanting to put our school logo on a debit card. They have some other school districts in the county that are already allowing them to do so. I thought we should give them permission, or not permission, to allow them to do that. I think it's great, but this one, I don't, I don't see downside to it. If another bank or someone else asked, we would do the same, but I think it should come before boards were consistent.
Give you a kickback.
No kickback, but you could get debit cards.
We only do all our banking with the clay and the.
You got it.
My question would be, do you want Pete, or do you want the motion S?
You guys can decide.
Want the, want the what?
Pete.
Or the S?
Or the S.
Did they ask for which logo?
No, it's asked you as a logo.
Well, I would rather have the motion S, because as you know, I don't like the fact that we exclude our females in our logo.
I would say Pete with the motion S on his hat.
I would, I, I would say Pete, because Pete is our logo. And I know we don't, when you look at any, any team, it's always the male. It's the male eagle, it's the male cardinal, it's the male Spartan, it's the male Viking. That's the way.
It doesn't make it wrong.
That's the way sports teams are. So would someone like to make a mo, make a motion, somebody on whatever.
I'll make a motion to approve using the painting of Pete with the motion S logo for Nicolay Bank debit card request.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Okay, um, does anyone have family or close eighth grade graduation or?
Whoops.
E.
Yeah, you're skipping ahead.
No, that didn't print.
She doesn't have a light of E.
She doesn't have an I E?
That didn't print out.
Fall two thousand nineteen.
Probably college now.
All right, um, fall two thousand nineteen, start college now applications. Um, do we have a, do you want to, somebody want to talk about that?
Sure, we have requests from twelve different students to take, uh, very different courses. This gives us an idea, this, this timeline gives us an idea of those courses that we're taking, so that we can include in our budget process. Uh, I like to see students taking advantage of it and using these classes.
So these are cap classes?
No, these are, uh, courses that we'll be taking at N B T C or Q C.
Okay, so we're approving all of them, not just the highlighted ones, correct?
The highlighted ones, um, are those that are comparable to what we offer, is that correct?
Oh, yes, correct, I'm sorry.
So, we would not approve those? We wouldn't, well, that, typically, we don't approve those. Right.
Correct, yes, I'm sorry.
You can approve, but you don't, it's recommended not to.
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve the list of the courses provided, with the exception of oral communications, English composition.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Carl, you good with that?
Um, what were your exceptions?
Oral communications and English comp one.
Questions or discussion?
Mike, I have a question. Have we, is there an answer on this? Do we, is this an open check, or do we put a cap on any of this, for how much the school spends, or is there a discussion, or are we mandated that we have?
We're pretty much mandated to, yeah, we don't have much choice, and we don't offer it. You know, the choices we basically had was on the highlighted ones.
What I don't understand is, isn't there DPI mandated high school curriculum that we have to satisfy?
Correct.
So, and this stuff is on that mandated high school curriculum?
You have to, if the student has the opportunity to pursue higher education while they're in high school, you have to provide that for them, yes.
It's separate legislation.
Yeah.
And do they have to have a minimum GPA at their, at our, from our school in order to enroll in these classes?
I don't believe so.
No.
And DPI won't allow for that?
No, it's up to the institution, the higher, higher education institution.
Well, didn't we talk about this?
You can have one point two here at school.
Didn't we have a discussion on that? Didn't we have that passing grade? That would be the one thing we talked about.
They have prerequisites.
The college, where they're going to take the class as.
So these kids have to fill out an application and be approved into these programs.
That's correct.
Well, no, the approval is what's happening right now. Um, when a student applies for this opportunity in the school district, has to provide it unless they can provide an alternative similar course in the house. It's what gives us the option to deny the oral communications or English comp. If we don't, students, uh, we have to create that opportunity.
But what I'm saying is, when you apply to higher education, you have to have a minimum GPA to get into a program, or to go into, do you follow?
I'm sure.
So if a, a student is not at a certain grade level here at Sevastopol, we still let them go on and apply for these programs?
A certain grade level we.
If it, if.
Like a two-point-five, three-point-oh.
They have to be the college admission forms of the courses.
No, just, it's in the.
Yeah, it's a, in the door, this box.
Well, that's what I, that's what I'm just curious, and I agree leaders would legislate that, but, and I'm shocked, I guess.
My, my question is, um, how do we sell this to the kids, the students?
Students, how do, how do they know that this is what's available?
It's part of our course planning opportunity. We do have students go through our regular curriculum and then once they've completed that, these are additional opportunities that they can take advantage of. Some of them work together with community programs that are CNA programs, so some of them are more better as well. And it's not necessarily promotion of courses as much as it is opportunities and following through students' academic and career planning. So we want students to, if they might want a nursing, have some course options associated with that. It does bode well for us though to continue to expand our coursework in-house and provide as many opportunities as we can because I think we can be more fiscally responsible. But legislation has opened the door so that we have to, have to provide these opportunities, but the more investment we make in our own staff to provide similar type courses here like your CAP classes, your AP classes, your dual enrollment classes where we have certified teachers, the more students will probably stay in-house to take those classes as a day of opportunities here. And we can maybe eliminate, eliminate more of these.
It's just so difficult with such a range of courses and you see sociology, psychology, medical terminology, nursing assistant, it's like, it's a plethora.
It is, yeah.
So do you have an idea of student success rate?
Yeah, I couldn't give you an exact number, but the students that are taking these classes are driven and have a high success rate.
Do these grades come towards their GPA in high school?
Yes.
They do, right?
So that's $10,610 for anyone who's interested in the number.
And some of them won't take them. They're asking for approval now, but they may not enroll.
Well, it's kind of, now, just for trivia then, but legislator doesn't allow, we don't get any money in any way through the program, that's just.
No, that's, yeah, that's part of the kicker.
Now, kind of related, as we're pushing this, some related effort to go into surveying our students after they graduate. One of the things I am personally interested in and some people might on this is, does this actually save them time in their education? Because there's a lot of kids I've talked to that they get all this stuff and it is awesome, not, but then they go to college and they still go to four years of college. So it didn't save them any money, they just took different courses because their advisors there are telling them to take four years of college or, you know, or what your two-year program is. So I'm just, I'm kind of deviating, but long-term, it would be nice to start gathering data to find out the payoff from this. Because what you like to hear, that our taxpayers and our budget is helping kids and when they go to school, they're getting earlier, they didn't have to pay as much because if they're just continuing their continuum of education, as I always call it, then, you know.
But it may have piqued their interest in something and, and helped them choose their career.
Well, and then those are some of the things that might come back and that might help make that question on there, you know. They just changed their course and that would be good. It was just a random thought since I.
I'm just adding that to it. The other thing it does is it causes us to live in two worlds and the two worlds are offering high school courses as well as college courses. And sometimes our students need to be available for a college course on Tuesday, Thursday, but that doesn't work in our schedule very well, so.
Yeah.
To accommodate that and that, it sometimes is a struggle, so. There are, there are definite advantages from a learning standpoint and parents want their children to have the interest as Cindy suggested and have the opportunity to try college courses and get some credits and maybe, maybe save some money or save some time. But at the same time, there are challenges to make this work in every single schedule because it expands our course offerings, our scheduling conflicts, our students moving around, most of them are in-house now online distance learning, but we still send students out. So it does, it does present challenges in our, in our schools as well.
I think.
As in discussion, is what it is.
I think we're ready for a vote on, to approve the, Carol, you want to re-read it?
So the motion by Brown with the second by today to approve for 2019, start college now applications with exceptions of oral communications and English comp one.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry. Item F, to appoint the Wisconsin Association of School Words Convention delegate and alternate. So he's served in that capacity. Would you like to do that again?
I would.
I move, we appoint, or would recommend or appoint, or what's the term?
It'll, it'll be a point, we need to appoint an alternate.
You want to do both at once?
Oh, yeah, I got you.
You were the alternate before, do you want to continue?
So, yeah.
So you.
I move to appoint the WASB convention delegate as Sue Today and the alternate as Lisa Berry.
Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry. Then to appoint the CISA VII board member from our board and convention delegate and Sue has served in that capacity. Would you like to do that again?
I would.
I'll move to appoint Sue, Sue Today as the CISA VII board and convention delegate.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I do have a point of discussion or just comment. I just want to acknowledge Sue's commitment to these two roles and, and her steadfast advocacy for Sebastopol in both of those roles, I think it's commendable. Thank you, comment.
But, and people don't probably know that, like you went to Washington, you went to Pennsylvania, you talked to legislators, yeah.
Yesterday.
Just yesterday, you know, it was Green Bay, yeah. And that's a lot of.
Now, there's only 250 people, that's to buy. At least you know how to get in the front line.
Did you go early? I mean, did you get in right away then?
Yeah. I'll, I'll tell you that story when we get there.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry. Do you have some digestive update you want to give?
Oh, I would get graduation representative.
Oh, my gosh, I can't reach, now, now I can go back to my printed agenda. Does anyone have an eighth grade, family or close friends that they would like to, be an eighth grade graduation representative?
What's the date of that?
Eighth grade graduation must be June, not, eight, July 70.
Friday the 7th?
It's the 6th.
Eighth grade graduation.
June 6th.
June 6th.
That's a.
Going four times.
That's a Friday, Thursday?
Thursday.
A Thursday is 6th.
Anyone? No one?
Well, my niece's daughter is graduating.
Oh, then.
I get you.
I suppose I'd rather be there anyway. So I get up on the stairs.
They're steps.
I can do the, I have.
And then anyone, family or close friends, social connections for the high school.
I can do high school this year.
I just ask by everyone who doesn't, if they're available, just open to it. By, by, by just one or two. I'm just asking.
Because that's the way we always.
Other place I've been, we just found out the day before how many chairs are set up there and everyone that wanted to sat there.
Well, I mean, anybody can come, I'm sure.
So there's two things to clarify because of the whole way.
I mean, I'm just saying.
Being present is one thing versus one would typically shake a hand or hand out, be part of the handout process.
Usually you want, you want to hand out to your child. But I've seen other places, is everyone sit, that can show up, shows up and usually the board president hands out the diploma or sometimes if it's special guests have done that and then everyone just shakes hands and if it's your son or daughter, of course you cut up and you give them the diploma, but everybody was there because why not let them shake the hand and roll? But if you want just two people, they're, okay, I'm not going to break tradition, but I don't understand why we look into two, but.
As long as I am per seating purposes, how many chairs we're going to have because when we practice, we have the graduates balanced and so forth and that's how they line up and come down, so I just need to know by Wednesday of practice.
But that's, you just want to keep it two, that's fine.
We're not feeling for practice, do we?
No, no, no.
No, we cheers.
Okay.
I split the graduates accordingly and they line up.
At least I'll be there, anybody else can show up too.
Why not?
Yeah, but there's nine of us.
Yeah, I, then we just.
Same with graduation.
I've never questioned it, we've just always done it that way, so. I will put a, put a message out to everybody that week before and say if you can come or not.
They don't have a list, they don't have a list in the program or anything like that.
We do list it in the program, but we just don't list it in the program.
Well, just list us in the program.
Just introduce us, so we know who we are.
Okay, so the week, that week before, I'll put out.
Just tell them our numbers and when Adam doesn't know how many, just fill out the email and call you and say you come or not. He'll figure out how many chairs we usually look.
June 6th, 2:00.
That's a Sunday.
Okay, that's great.
Flexibility is key to theory, no, it's great, it's great.
Okay, now we can go to item A, legislative update.
Well, I did attend yesterday and I, I did testify and it was kind of an interesting situation. When I got there at 8:30, we weren't allowed to register until 9:00. But I got there at 8:30 and there were at least 150 people there. And I went to the back of the line and I, I said to the lady ahead of me, I said, is this the back of the line? And she said, yes, but you have to get a number. And I said, well, where do I get a number? Well, she said, you have to go to the front desk, the registration desk. Well, this was a very narrow hallway and I'm trying to make my way through all these 150 people and I get up to the registration desk and I say, I need a number. And there was a lady there who was, thought she was in charge at least and she said, we aren't giving out any more numbers. And then I looked at her kind of strangely and then another lady said to me, don't listen to her. She said, stand there and you will register right at 9:00 and you will go right in there and you will be among the first to speak. So I like. I thought that was good advice.
Didn't happen to you another time? You went to the front of the line, she's a line cutter.
She was following her.
In the meantime, the other lady wasn't real happy with me, you know, standing there and I thought, what the heck? And so I did and actually I got to testify first. And so there are 200 people who are up there. But that was after all the dignitaries, you know, the, the mayor and the college president and all the rest of them. And I got to be the first.
Did they get three minutes too or?
Two minutes.
Two minutes? They only got two minutes too?
Two minutes. Well, no, they did, they got.
They got longer.
The rest of us got two. But I did get to say what I wanted to say and then the nice thing was we could give them our complete written testimony which embellished the areas that I highlighted because in two minutes, you can't say much. But the thing that I really wanted to hit with was the predictable and sustainable funding, the $200 per pupil in 1920 and 204 in 2021. And then indexing future revenue limit adjustments to changes in the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, beginning in 21-22. Then I also stressed special education reimbursement because that would really help us. Mental health and school safety funding and then the school levy credit, that one I spent a little more time on because my concern is if they take away the school levy credit and put that into equalization aid and we don't get an equalization aid, that's a problem for us. So if they do that, if they take away the levy credit and put it in equalization aid, my point was it's absolutely essential that we get $3,000 per pupil, minimum aid for districts like us and the other districts in the state that get no equalization aid. I don't think from my sources and who know much more about this than I do, that, that levy credit is going to change, but in case it does, I wanted to be sure that they knew that. We were concerned about that. And I understand today from the Fair Aid Coalition that Representative or so has put forth a deal for the $1,000 minimum aid for districts like ours that get no equalization aid. So that would be on top of the $3,000 if they move from the levy credit. So, and that's a good thing, there are a lot of people are signing on to that, but I will contact Joel Kitchens and let him know that we really need to have this. He and I have had conversations before and we don't entirely agree on that, but I will certainly verify that with him again. And then I did stress to the committee that I put, what I put in the report to you from the speech that I heard in Philadelphia from Johnny Taylor, who talked about this perfect storm that we're facing as a nation with a low birth rate, a very flourishing economy, low unemployment and a labor shortage. We need every single worker we can get and we need kids that are coming out of school who are agile, who are adaptable, trainable, they have public speaking ability, they have customer focus, teamwork, reliability and dependability. And my closing point to the finance committee was that it's crucial for the success of our democracy that we provide the necessary resources for our public schools to turn out young people who are college, career and community ready. So we'll see, there it goes. But there were a lot of people, there was a woman alongside me from my under-school board and she was testifying. And interestingly enough, when some of us were testifying about education, there were people in this group of 200 people who stood up in support of what we were saying. So I think there's, there's good support there. I did talk privately with a couple of the legislators and we'll see where it goes. But the big thing that the governor stressed when we met with him as a WASB board and that I keep hearing is people other than those of us around the table need to contact our legislators. People who are sitting out here need to contact our legislators, people who are listening to this tape because the legislators assume we're all biased and we are. I mean, we're all supportive of public education and they know that. But if people from the community get out there, if our business people get out there and start contacting our legislators, that has a big impact. And I'd be happy to work with anybody who wants to contact a legislator but maybe doesn't have all of this information because I've got tons of budget information that I'd be happy to have to work with.
I think that's the key. People don't know what to say.
Right.
And I guess as a school board, we can't put out a letter and say, here, people from Sebastopol should sign this and send it in to the governor. But if there was a, a group that organized to.
If they hear from different voices.
To get this information, you know, if someone can organize a group to get this information out to the community and, you know, everybody gets somebody to send five, you know, you get five people to send five letters, presumably you've got a lot of letters, but people don't know what to write.
Or email, and I could help them with that, I'd be happy to sit down with anybody if there's a person out there who wants to get some people together and invite them.
Spinning off of that, I attended the Door County Economic Development Luncheon yesterday and Mike Gallagher was the speaker, who was very good. But have read your report and then knowing the things that were brought up yesterday, it's so too, you know, it's like the, you said the good points about this perfect storm coming together and how we struggle for, for staff. And I actually was going to reach out to Patty Vickman because I think that it's important that our superintendents attend that luncheon as well as maybe some people from our STEM and STEAM areas because we need tradespeople desperately in our area specifically as well. And for them to, to hear about those pleas of these businesses and, and how that carries through. It was, it was, it was a great speech and cadence, one for industry of the year and then quantum PC services, one for entrepreneur of the year. So there's a young business that has made a huge impact already in our community and has a lot of young staff that are in that techy kind of, you know, trades area. So it was, it was a really good bunch of good speeches, so.
And I will say, we did meet with Mike Gallagher when we were in Washington DC and we talked particularly about special ed funding and he gets it, he really does. So I, I think that's important from that standpoint.
And he's just from Green Bay, so he's got ties, he was here for Easter. He said he'd spent Easter in Door County and then came back for this speech. And so, I mean, he, he's been in our area plenty already.
And I should say, just for anybody who's listening, the work that I'm doing through WASB, like at these national events, has all been paid for by WASB, there's no cost to this district board in case anyone heard any kind of question about that.
Okay, good, thank you. We have some, we've got some resignations. We have a resignation from Tricia DuFet in the special education area, we've got her letter. Is there a motion to accept Tricia's resignation?
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Tricia DuFet.
So, second?
Second.
Questions or discussion or?
I'd like to add something.
Yeah.
This resignation is.
Soft.
Yeah. It's, it's a tough one for the school. I just want the board to know the massive contribution that, getting emotional. Just the contribution that Ms. Dufek has had to Sebastopol and particularly the students that she serves. So, I just want the board to know that this was a hard resignation. It was a resignation because of licensure only, not her connection to our school, and not her want to, still want to be here, be a part of Sebastopol, and be a part of the students' lives that she is entwined with right now, and then the future students that can work with her. So, it's hard for this department. It's an enormous loss, and as I develop in my role as a leader here at Sebastopol, I want to fight for the, the staff members that need to be a part of our school. And I don't have the solution right now, but I talked to Litkey about this, to potential brainstorming ways to be able to keep the, the good people of Sebastopol, the people that make the most difference in our kids' lives, and she is one of them, that I ask, you know, for your support in the future, if we can find a way to keep Ms. Dufek here at Sebastopol in a capacity to continue to serve her kids, because she's amazing.
We're going to look, as an administrative team at our special ed department, but this licensing, I mean, we contacted the EPI, we looked for avenues. The only avenue was through CISA VII. She has three or four licenses already, and the easiest path was through CISA VII, and that was not easy, so.
And I did meet with Colleen Tim from CISA VII, and, you know, she went over everything with me, and what the course requirements were for certification and the cost, and CISA VII was willing to work with Tricia on the cost, a payment plan, so to speak, but evidently that didn't work for her, so.
Well, it was the cost, and it was also the amount of work for someone who already had as many licenses as she did to get one more.
And, and just a little bit of a backstory, Ms. Dufek had worked on this for two years, and she'd been given information and worked on that information, and then it's almost, it ceased to change. They, they went through an audit, and it was nothing that anyone could foresee coming, and this is what happened, you know, because of that. So, everything that Ms. Dufek was asked to do prior to this, she honored that, and she, she did that. And then, you know, when the audit came, it was just very unfortunate that, because of that, now we're losing a, a staff member for that. But I just need to press upon you, it's not that she didn't want to get the license, and that she didn't want to do the work. She did what she needed to do, and it was just unfortunate that the rules changed. The rules changed.
Yeah, and we talked to the EPI, and they said, well, okay, with the CISA VII or a different agency, and there was no, no easy path for her to get one more license. I mean, it's.
On a related note, too, Chris Horvath, who's our high school special ed teacher, is going through the same process, and I've been on the phone with CISA to make sure that things are in line for him, and we don't go through any of the, you know, our staff don't have to.
Because he's in his first year, we don't want the same thing, right?
So, it's a huge loss, and her kids are sad and upset.
To add an observation that gives you an example of the type of work that she does and the connection she makes with kids, I walked through our building at lunchtime, and you'll see a group of students between 12 and 20, average students that are eating lunch are with her. They really bond with her, they connect with her, they spend time there, and they feel comfortable. The other piece is that she's re-certified, and it's one of the most challenging areas to serve high school students. Reading, everybody can read, but at what level, and what skills need to be focused on and further developed at the high school level is challenging, but she has many strategies. She does a wonderful job. Compliments Mr. Horvath, who is a really strong math resource for our students. So, that math and reading resource combination is essential for, for students. Just wanted to add those pieces.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion, the second, on favor of accepting Tricia Dufek's resignation. Say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Then we have the resignation of head basketball coach Dan Judas. I have a motion to accept his resignation.
So.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And then we would accept the resignation of Andy Silas as the head boys' basketball coach.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Andy Silas, head basketball coach, boys' basketball coach.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, please.
Question or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Then we have the unpaid leave request.
Laura Lunk is one of our aides, and she is also a DI coach to her daughter's team, which she coaches as qualified for globals. It's in Kansas City. They're gone for five school days. She doesn't have vacation days, and so that the unpaid time off, unpaid time off, has to be by the school board approved. You got to be careful with this, because everybody, the other years, we're approving a whole bunch, because we often qualify, this should qualify three teams, and you got to be careful in this regard. But this is a special situation, considering that her husband's a Coast Guard gentleman and wasn't paid for the government shutdown, so she used her personal days during that time and to get through, because they weren't receiving paychecks for a while. So, I recommend we send her with the team and do unpaid for that week.
I'll move to approve Laura Lunk's unpaid leave request.
Second. Questions or discussion? Are there only three teams? I hope there were six, too.
There was three teams that made it to globals, but there were sixteen that went to state.
Sixteen.
Sixteen when they stayed, yes.
Any questions on the unpaid leave request? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Then we need to set a date for the board reading session for our preliminary budget review. When would you like to do that, Mr. Litkey?
Carl, what's your schedule look like?
I'll get down to that one.
Pick a rain day.
Little June.
You'd be like that.
When I get back from my own. I don't know.
Can you forecast a rain day?
Yeah, that's what. We don't have any of them anymore. We're waiting rainy nights.
Is a Wednesday best for you?
Wednesdays are better for me, yes.
Doesn't matter the name it's up.
Do they, does everything have to be entered first, or we're just going to go through what we have?
Yeah, we'll go through what we have, we have point. When does baseball season end?
Not until after, not till the end of May.
Depends on how far they go.
Yeah, like, if, when I get back from my trip, if there's still plenty, we're going to state.
Do we try to wait early, so get it done?
Well, we should probably do it before we do contracts, right?
We'll be able to hand out contracts after tonight's meeting.
Right.
Right. Because those have to be issued by the 15th, the next board meeting is the 16th.
The 12th?
Let's do it the second Wednesday of May.
May 8th.
Second Wednesday of May.
May 8th. Because I know next week I've got some morning meetings with Skyward. So, if we did it in the afternoon, I know that wouldn't make it, where I could get, I wouldn't have anything, because all my Skyward meetings are in the morning.
6 o'clock?
6 o'clock. We have meeting for.
3:30, but 6:00?
That's fine, practice will be done.
Two and a half hours is due.
No.
Got to eat and drink.
Maybe.
Cindy needs some cooking time.
Okay, so, May 8th, Wednesday, May 8th at 6:00 p.m. Then we've got some readings, first readings of policies. These are policies that require changes, most often due to some legal precedent. They've been reviewed by, by the House, Mr. Litkey and today, the Policy Committee, and the board has had them in advance to be able to read and review them and pose any questions.
Listen before, when you're making the motions, make sure you include first reading, and we weren't really doing that for the second reading one. Make sure you include first reading.
Okay, I didn't catch, I lost track of that. So, when you make your motion, I approve first reading of.
Right.
So, we'll look for those first readings, 11:30, 32:30, and 42:30 for the motion.
I'll make a motion for the first reading of policies, 1130, 3230, and 4230, conflict of interest.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. 1400.
Move to approve the first reading of policy 1400, job description.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. 1662, 3362, and 4362.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the first reading of policy 1662, 3362, 4362, employee anti-arrestment.
Second.
Questions or discussion? I will note, for benefit of someone listening, that when we do groups of two or three, they are essentially the same policy, just for different employment groups. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. 2260.
Move to approve the first reading of policy 2260, non-discrimination and access to equal educational opportunities.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. 2270.
Move to approve first reading of policy 2270, religion in the curriculum.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. 2700.01.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of policy 2700.01, school performance report.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. 3120.
Move to approve the first reading of policy 3120, employment of professional staff.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Then we have a first reading of new policy 2420.
Move to approve the first reading of new policy 2420, education for employment.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. That concludes our regular business for the evening. I'll look for a motion to convene to executive session.
Second.
Second.
We'll call, will Karen?
Aye.
10:30.
Aye.
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 Motion carried at 10:13 p.m. Open session. Can I hear a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 staff compensation letter?
I will move to approve the 2019, 2020 staff compensation letter.
Second.
Any questions or discussion on that? Karen, when you're ready, tell us.
I'm ready.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And then a motion to approve the Danielle Hansen.
Insurance.
Oh, we're approving insurance, too. All right.
I move to approve the insurance as recommended.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And then we have the FMLA request of Danielle Hansen.
Move to approve the FMLA request of Danielle Hansen.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have our regular school board meeting on May 16th. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourn at 11:02.
And we're also meeting on the 8th as well.
Yes.